Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion for approval of the agenda. Kim? Matt, second. Any questions? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Sorry.
Opposed? Carried, uh, let's see, you got five. Carried eight, zero. Moving on to Board Recognition.
Okay. Welcome, everyone. I'm gonna have to use this because I'm losing my voice. So, tonight's spotlight, we are gonna recognize our highly-paid Board of Education. I don't know if you guys realize the compensation that they get for this, alright? No, I'm teasing. This is an evening I appreciate, because this is the one chance publicly I get to thank my nine bosses, and I know they hate when I do that, but, um, and I shouldn't, I shouldn't say that, because truly, it is a team. I've been in education for 24 years, and I have to tell you, I haven't been a superintendent for 24 years, I wouldn't be alive, but I will tell you that in 24 years, you learn Boards of Education in different school districts throughout my career, and I will tell you that this Board of Education is not only brilliant, everybody brings something different to the table, but it's a team, and that's what I'm most proud of, is the team. We don't always agree, and that's what makes it work, right? Just with our leadership and teachers, when we sit at a table, we don't agree. If we all agreed, that's a problem, right? We have to challenge each other, and that's what's great about this Board. They challenge each other, it's respectful, and it's a team. When we walk out, we're on the same page, and we move forward, and it's always, always, always about the kids. This week is Board Recognition Week, and I can't thank this Board enough for what they do. The hours they put into this school district is unbelievable. I mean, you see them every couple of weeks at board meetings. There is a lot more than that that this Board of Education does that the community, teachers, you don't realize, for no compensation, for nothing. They do it because they love kids, and they want to shape the future of this country, of this state, of Baldwinsville, so I can't thank them enough personally, what they've done for me in my personal life and my professional life. They are, they have the biggest, each and every one of them have the biggest heart, they truly care about the employees and about the kids. They truly, truly do, so, on behalf of just myself right now, thank you for everything. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We're gonna do it a little different this year, and in the past, if somebody remember, we'd fill this room up, right? This year, I like to keep the board guessing, so this year, we're gonna go a little different. We decided to do one presentation that all the principals with their, uh, their, uh, their teams at their schools have decided to do this. I'm not gonna steal the thunder, but I'm gonna let Mr. Ewing do the presentation on their thank you to the Board, so I will turn it over to Mr. Ewing.
The administrators in the room better clap. I was elected to do the presentation. Thank you, Matt, so much. Thank you, obviously, to the Board of Education as well. We can't thank you enough for all that you, all the work that you do, aimed at the improvement of the Baldwinsville Central School District, and really tremendous experiences for kids. As Matt said, we have in past had students and staff, and it's amazing, but it's hard to top year after year, but we, we tried to take a little bit different approach. We actually have a personalized message that will be delivered to you tonight, and I wanted to just say, as Matt talked about, you know, really what the Board does for the students and staff and families of the Baldwinsville Central School District, there has been one thing that as of, I think officially, last year, being the Positivity Project has actually taken full hold of Baldwinsville, all schools, K through 12 onboard with the Positivity Project. So, that being the case, it has had such a tremendous impact. I can, I can speak to Palmer and the impact that it's had at Palmer, by the looks of individuals in the, uh, in the audience tonight and all the Positivity Project shirts that'll be speaking. We thought that it would be amazing to have a personalized message from Mike Irwin, who is the founder of the Positivity Project, thanking specifically the Board of Education for their dedication to the Positivity Project and all it brings to the students of the Baldwinsville Central School District, as well as staff, and the impact that it ultimately is going to have, far-reaching, beyond the walls of Baldwinsville, but obviously into our community, into the world at large. So, that being the case, I'm gonna pass over here to Ms. Greenie and see if she can play this message for us.
Baldwinsville Central Schools Board of Education, greetings from down in North Carolina. I wanted to take a few moments to recognize you as a Board for your remarkable leadership in supporting the Positivity Project. We are now partnered with over 600 schools across America, and we continue to grow rapidly, but few school districts have seen the power of the P2 as clearly as you. How do I know? Because I have seen it daily in my social media feeds. I spent several hours talking about it with three of your principals in my leadership seminar last year, and I saw it live and in person for myself at several of your schools last year. While we are thrilled at how well Baldwinsville schools are implementing the Positivity Project so far, the bigger opportunity is on the horizon in the years ahead. Character strength development is a lifelong journey, and it compounds with time. I cannot wait to see what graduates of CW Baker High School will look like in 2029, after 13 years of consistent exposure to the Positivity Project, the 24 character strengths, and the other people matter mindset. So, on behalf of Jeff and our small team, thank you for your incredible leadership that has empowered your administrators, educators, and support staff to go all-in on the P2. The impact will forever change the lives of everyone who is a part of your school district. Thank you so much.
Okay, so, um, I can't thank the principals enough. I mean, Mr. Irwin is, is an unbelievable person, and for him to, you know, I don't know how you guys do it, but we have a special connection with him, which is awesome, because we get special things from him, and like a message to the Board of Ed, I mean, out of all, what is it, 600 schools now, and, and we got him to, to talk directly to, um, to our Board, because we have the best Board, so why wouldn't he, right? So, what I would like to do now is, I'm gonna call each one of the Board members up, present you with a gift, and then if we could just, after I call your name, we'll go up here for a picture, and then there'll be something that's in there that I'll ask to take out. We'll take two pictures, one with just the Board, and then I'll ask you to take something out of here that we can hold up, so that we can get it out there in the, uh, in the media world. So, um, let's, we're gonna start with our Board President, Ms. Joan Reeves. I, I, I wanted to start with Joan because she likes the spotlight. She loves it. See that face? I'm gonna stand over here. She can get physical. She's fake, see? She won't do it, because I got witnesses. Okay, so, um, next, our Vice President, Ms. Chrissy Bond. Okay, next. Oh, she's not here, okay. Well, I'm gonna recognize. Jo, no, honey, that's all right. It's my fault, I forgot to tell you. Jordan, our student member. This is our student member, Jordan, perfect timing, honey. No, you're fine, honey, I'm, I'm, you, that's, no, wait, no, right, when you, see, we, we celebrate the latecomers. No, you are fine. What we do, we're recognizing and thanking the Board of Education for everything you guys do, so it's a little something special, so now you have to stand up here, because we're gonna do a picture. Okay, next, Ms. Denise Falso. Okay, next, Mr. Matt Jaeger. Next, Mr. Jeff Marier. Okay. Mrs. Jen Petruno. Next, Mrs. Kim Sullivan Deck. Next, Mr. Jim Goulet. And last but certainly not least, Mr. Brian Dingell. Okay, so, um, yep, so, let's just first take a picture, um, like this, without the bag, and then, um, yeah, try and spread out a little more, no. But just so everybody knows, I, you know, a month or so ago, I'm like, hey, can everybody send me their shirt sizes? Oh my God, not realize, you know, realizing that shirts come in, yeah, there's men's, there's women's, there's under armor, there's this, everything fits different, I'm like, man, that was like one of the hardest things I had to do. And, yeah, and I offended everybody, yeah. All right, so, perfect, so we'll hold the shirts up and do another one. Yeah, you know, ouch. Thank you, guys, very much. Okay, so just, um, just real quick, just to wrap it up, on behalf of every employee in the school district, myself, the community, thank you, thank you, thank you to the Board. You have no idea how much we appreciate you and for the work that you do for our kids, so, thank you, and I hope this is, remember, it's not just today, this is Board Week, so, we'll spend some of it together in Rochester in getting our professional development, so, thank you again, have a great week. You can all go home early, I'll finish this up.
So, so, as you can see, this is like Christmas for us up here. So, we're gonna, we, you know, from the bottom of our hearts, we can't thank you enough. This is really neat stuff. I've been here 39 years, and I never have a Beeville mug. This is like a first for me, and I'm really thrilled to have a Positivity Shirt finally, since everybody else has one, so I want to thank you, it was really, really nice, great idea, guys, thank you. Now we gotta get back to business. So, now we are at Correspondence Board Activities, and we have, oh, we have a short list for tonight, Technology Committee meeting.
This, this meeting was, was pretty routine for us in the Technology Planning Committee. We reviewed the equipment leases, the equipment the district has, increases in, in devices, you know, obviously, we're continuing to utilize the Chromebooks more, the iPads are still pretty, are useful for the younger kids, the K2 kids. The, with, with technology ever-changing, it also increases the need for continued training, so, talked about different ways to do that. One of the points of discussion was, even though we're really technically at a one-to-one ratio, sometimes it's hard to figure out where those devices are so that they can be utilized, so, RJ and his team are gonna start to look at tracking some data in terms of usage, and to make sure we're maximizing our resources. There's some new tools for the network administrators that will make their lives easier that they're using too. So, Jen, what did I miss?
It wasn't me last night. I killed it. And they just reviewed what we already reviewed with the audit for the security, the computer systems, and then just, I just wanted to add, I thought it was very interesting, you know, we talked a lot about professional development at our last meeting, and it seemed to be an incredible need for the teachers in the district to get professional development on the technology side. They get professional development on how to use the technology, but not how to implement its use in lesson plans within the classroom, and that seemed to be a thing that the teachers were really interested in, at least the teachers there, and that they were looking at possibly figuring out some afternoon workshops. I guess they do some of it during the summer, Eric Ziegler does it with some one-on-one coach, learning coach, teacher relationships, but more of a need to get more of the teachers involved with that, to bring that in. And we spent all this money on a one-to-one ratio of Chromebook to students, so it'd be nice to actually use them in the classroom and kind of expand using the SAMA models, what Eric talked a lot about.
Just wanted to add that Eric did update us all and show us all the Smart Learning Suite, which is really impressive. You can do student assessments with it, and students can follow along on their own devices, either at their own pace, or the instructor can force the moving along of the visual material. It was really impressive that it was presented at the, at the end, and Eric is doing some one-on-one PD or some online. He's developed some online PD or some after-school, so I thought it was really impressive that, you know, we've spent, as Jen said, we've spent so much time trying to implement the one-to-one ratio. It was great to see that there, that it's being used and in really creative ways in the classroom.
Funding the Future for Staff Presentation at DIRG.
So, I, you know, I really, I could, I could speak to both, I, the staff and the public meeting, because they were the same presentation. So, Paul Saversky, our consultant that helped bring the community together to discuss options for funding or planning the future of Beeville as it relates to facilities. I thought he did a real nice job. We kept it to about an hour and 15-minute presentation, and we went through the report that we gave to the Board about a month or so ago, and we just laid it all out, a lot to pro, a lot of information, a lot to process. Jamie, Tiffany, and myself have been talking even this morning and working with, with Sarah, because I think the work now is obviously for the Board and for us to really dissect this, because we haven't been involved, right? This has really been our community giving us the options on what the future of Beeville will look like. And when I, when I say that, I mean the buildings. We have some very old buildings. What does that look like? Do we build a new building? Do we add on to building? Do we change the structure? For example, do we go with two K, pre-K through second grade, and then maybe two buildings that are third through fifth, and then sixth through eight, middle school, and then high school, 10, so the 10 through 12. I'm just, that's just one small example, but that's what this committee's doing. We, I'm always, I'm never here in the moment, I'm always looking where, where we're gonna be, and this is certainly something we have to look at for the future of our, for our kids, and we needed the voice of our community. We have some excellent ideas, so really what we do from here now is, is for us, we're gonna have to put some time aside and, and review this ourself. While we're doing that as a Board and Cabinet, we need to be transparent with our community. We need to, I know we had our first presentation, but now we have to be out there, we have to get the information out, we have to put it in layman's terms, and just, I hate, lack of better terms, beat it like a dead horse, you know, just, we have to get the message out, we have to have our community understand what it is we're looking for and why we're doing that. So, communication, 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 and then hopefully, maybe in a year, what were we saying, Jamie, maybe January of 21, 2021, we can start looking to put something out for a vote. So, that's really what, Paul did a nice job going through the process, and I can't thank the, the volunteers from our community that spent a year putting all this information together. So, he did a nice job presenting, we have our initial swing at this, but the audi, you know, we, 25, 30 people, maybe, at each, more at the second from the community, so, like anything else we do, we just, it can't be a one-and-done, we have to be out there in different venues, whether it's us going out to Rotary, or Chamber of Commerce, or going to the Red Mill, and whatever it is to accommodate the community, we have to get out there and talk about these things. So, that's really the next steps, communicate the message, but we, as a Board and Cabinet, have to sit down and say, okay, what do we like? Because ultimately, at the end of the day, it is a Board decision on what you guys want to do and what you see for the future of our kids. So, anything to add to that, Jamie?
No, that's, that's pretty much it. Yeah, we're just going further, and we'll work on a timeline, and come up with a schedule in the next few weeks, and start bouncing some ideas off of you guys about when we might. The whole point would be at some point, you know, have another building project vote, whether it's in the fall or the winter of '21, or the fall of '20, but just take our time and go through over the next 10 or 12 months, come up with a plan for the future for years. We've got some pretty interesting ideas. We're working, I'm gonna work with Sarah to try to get it reduced to some more layman's terms on a single piece of paper with bulleted, you know, if you're gonna read these documents, here's what, here's the 10 things you should know about what we're looking at, something like that. I think that was Sarah's phrase, so we'll do that.
Thank you. October 21st, the Audit Committee meeting.
He's gonna do the full presentation, correct?
So you wanted to wait for the full presentation?
Yeah.
Okay, we didn't get to the Claims Auditor Report, I noticed that, so, that's for next time.
No, I mean, that's, that's normal, there's nothing, you know, earth shattering in there.
I didn't see anything earth shattering. You guys did a pretty good job.
Okay. So, on to, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, I got one, one more item for the, uh, last Tuesday was the second meeting for the Diversity Group for the district, so that's, I don't know if we, we talked about it after, I wasn't at the first meeting, so, but it's really a great, it started out with dialogue, we're moving to, moving from dialogue to action, looking at some goals and things like that, moving forward in terms of the district, the community, and that. It's, it's really a, a good group, a safe space to, to talk about things, for me to talk about my ignorances, as a lot of this goes, but, you know, in, in all the different ways, and it parallels really well with the, with the Positivity Project that, you know, we're doing as a district, but to look at all the ways in which people are different, you know, it's not just a race thing, it's not just an ability thing, but it's all the ways people are different, so, you know, really looking at, at taking this thing on head-on, and, and as it relates to bullying, too.
I got nervous, I'm like, okay, oh, go ahead, Jen.
No, we just had the Mental Wellness Committee meeting as well, and after going to what we did in Saratoga Springs, it's amazing to see all of the different things, I mean, that was discussed at that meeting. We are well on our way for this year. We've got some curriculum updates with Positivity Project, and the curriculum changes K through 12. We also got a $500 grant per building to support mental illness, which is nice from the Hope of Bereav. They discussed the upcoming viewing of Screenagers, which I had also intended for part of it. My son wanted to leave, I couldn't stay for the entire thing, but Matt said that there's great dialogue, can we dialogue after that? And the parents were talking about, can we get together? And you may want to speak more to that, some of the things that the parents said.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, a couple of things related to Screenagers, too. As a matter of fact, we, at Cabinet this morning, we spoke about that. Yes, you know, the movie's great, what I enjoy is watching the community come together and, and ask questions and help each other, and I really feel we need to do more of that, because we're, we're in this together, right? We're a community, and what works for one family, like, great idea, I mean, it was just, it's so nice to see people helping people, and one of the things, the first, Screenagers one, the first one, we had over 300 people attend, which was, was, was great. This one, we had a little over 50. And it's always hard trying to plan, you know, when to do, because there's just so many things going on every day in the district. So I spoke with my team this morning, and I'm going to meet with Carrie Lamachia to talk about hosting another one. And again, it's, yes, to maybe get some people who haven't seen it out to see the video, but also a venue for the community to help each other. Because I certainly don't have the answers, but when you sit in the room and you have, you know, everybody in there, you know, I even learned, like, oh, what a great idea, I could do that. Or I wish I had done that when the kids were younger. So I'm going to be working with Carrie this week to look at, see if we can do another showing for those who couldn't make it. So more to go, to come on that.
Well, I think on the Screenagers one, we were trying to figure out why there was low attendance. I still think a lot of people thought it was the same Screenagers, even though it was Take Two. But I think that one was just as important, if not more so than the first one was. But I was amazed at the amount of dialogue afterwards for the small crowd that it was. It just kind of continued on. Everybody still was engaged in it. And on the Mental Wellness Committee, it was good to see that we've started and moved ahead on the mental health first aid. And that's another process that we need to start, and that's moving ahead.
Yeah, and also Chris Dunn talked a lot about the vape education and what we're doing with our students with the violations of the Code of Conduct and turning, you know, a negative into a, hopefully, a positive learning thing for them to try and nip those bad behaviors. Also, just, there are two topics at Coffee and Conversation as well that seem to generate quite a bit of conversation. One was Screenagers, and how some families thought it was very important for all the kids to see something like that. And if we could do that, this parent I talked to after, I didn't realize there was such a fee to actually do that, and how to get everyone as well to see that would be interesting. But I thought it was interesting, the Coffee and Conversation was the Curriculum Department, and the one topic, it's funny that we're talking about board goals and what to do with that world language component, and that seemed to generate the most conversation and questions. Questions such as, you know, can my child take more than one foreign language? You know, when do they start? And I thought the timing was fantastic, because we just had that discussion three days prior to the parents quiring about that.
Okay, just, I just don't know where else to squeeze this in, so if you could just bear with me. First and foremost, I have to apologize. I have to, the, so you have a couple of them out here. Students from Jamie Kyler, Mr. Kyler, up at the high school. These were made by students from his class. So I have to make sure I acknowledge these kids, because they really put a lot of time and effort into these. So we got to give a special thank you, and I will put something together on behalf of the board, put it in the Friday Letter, so that we can send something to the kids and to Mr. Kyler. But the students are Nathan Marié, no relation to Jeff, I don't think. Nicholas Fogu, and I hope I'm saying this right, some of the names. Alexander Little, Kaylee Estes, Callie Smith, Jake Seethelt, and Kerrigan Shaw. These are the students that made these. So I have to thank them, and I will get something special to them and share with the board in the Friday Letter. Second is, in the Friday Letter, I put, at my Chiefs meeting, once a month I meet with all the superintendents from the county, and we spoke about, and I put this PowerPoint in the Friday Letter, okay? This is basically, in a nutshell, I want to make sure I just make mention to this. This is a situation where we have an opportunity to buy the Crown Road campus, okay? And everything's in the PowerPoint that I gave you. But this is, as far as finances, it makes 100% sense to purchase as opposed to rent. And especially when you're renting, you always have the uncertainty of losing the space. And certainly, that's always, could potentially be an issue when you don't have a space anymore. So there's pictures in here. It is an excellent campus. It is definitely student-centered. It's a perfect place for our kids who attend BOSI's to attend. I wanted to just publicly remind, or not remind, just make sure that if you can get out to vote, that would be perfect. And I will be sending out reminders to everybody, but the voting day is Tuesday, November 19th, from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Joan, am I, you know, I didn't want to, were there any questions as you went through the PowerPoint specific to that? Right now, we rent the space. Whenever BOSI's has an opportunity to purchase, which we recently, the BOSI's main building, where we have attended in the past, we recently purchased that as opposed to renting. We have this excellent opportunity to purchase Crown Road Campus. And I think it's 100%, and correct me if I'm wrong, Joan, unanimous that every school district of the 23 in our BOSI's supports. So I wanted to make sure that, you know, I put the PowerPoint that I just received last Wednesday and got it to you and answer any questions, especially having Joan here.
But even if you're bonding for it, you're still saving money, you know, from all the rent costs and all the costs we have to put in over the years. So it's just much better to own it. And yet, they have to want to be in a position to sell it before you can actually buy it. It has to be for sale first, so. And it was, the guy is very old, the owner of it, and his kids want the money, they don't want the building. So, you know, we started negotiating, and that's where we are.
I know it's a real brief overview, but are there any specific questions? And if I don't have the answer, I could certainly call Colleen Vigiano and ask, but... Okay, and I'll put this, again, you know, just as a reminder, if you can get out there to vote. Thanks, Joan, that's...
Okay, moving on, it's Student Board Report.
Okay, so the past few weeks have been relatively quiet. Sports have been finishing up, and most notably, our marching band yesterday had a really good win. They're climbing up in the ranks and are preparing for championships, which is really exciting. A lot of them are beaming this morning. Some concerns that I talked about with the administration on Friday is the vaping concern that is currently going on in our school district. A lot of the older grade levels, we have a lot of kids who are unfortunately addicted to nicotine and have a vaping difficulty. So in response to the vaping issues, there's a lot of posters in the school district, in Baker. There are posters on the gym walls, the doors to the bathrooms, explaining the dangers of vaping. And what I learned, which I think is very good to spread, is that if a kid is caught with vaping or with a vaping addiction, they are met with educational resources rather than being suspended from school, which I think is really great for kids to know and help kids get more resources, because there are plenty of resources in the school district, such as Guidance Counselors and Office. So I thought that would be really good to express tonight. Additionally, the Positivity Project is at Baker now, and it's going very well so far. We had our first meeting on the first Wednesday of this month. And so far, we have done a luncheon for new students, where some of the Positivity Project members had lunch with the new students, and we talked about the school, and we just got to know their names and made new friends, which was really good. I made some connections there with some new students as well. We have, and we invited new students to come to the first meeting, and we had a full room. We could not fit in the Guidance Conference Room. So we have so many kids interested in the Positivity Project, and it is a student-led group. So we're pretty much just trying to get it out there, that we have so many events planned for Positivity Projects, such as a Christmas Positivity Week, a mural paired up with the Art Club to help highlight some character strengths and diversity, and give kids the opportunity to graffiti the mural themselves to show their identity in the mural. There's, we have a whole list of ideas that students had just thrown out at that meeting, and we're organizing it the first Wednesday of November. We will be organizing it and reaching out and trying to get all these plans set in stone. So overall, mental wellness is going to be a huge focus this year, and we are very, very, very excited. And that's all I really have to share today.
There are no requests to speak.
Approval of the consent agenda? I didn't even read the resolution yet, but that's all right. Any questions? Yeah, well, I had to push my button so Matt would be happy. I pushed Matt's button a little too many times, I guess. And no questions on it at all? Alls in favor? Opposed? Carried 9-0. Leadership Report.
Matt, I'm sorry, I'm trying to figure out how to best go about this. Why don't we start, well, we're going to start with, let's start with the account first, right? So let's do the auditor's report, and then I can massage the rest of it.
I think that's the reason we started at 6:30.
Yeah. So let's start with Tom. You want to, you want to come up and give us the audit report? So this is what we were going to speak about earlier, so now we'll get the summary straight from the boss.
Should I sit down or stand up? All right, thank you for inviting me here tonight. I'm here to present the 2019 audited financial statements. You should have received those documents in your packets. And we did meet tonight with the Audit Committee. We spent about an hour with the Audit Committee talking about the financial statements. And we had a very good discussion. We talked quite a bit about year-over-year variances. We talked about budget variances. We talked about fund balances and reserves. And we also talked about internal controls and checks and balances. So we did have a very good discussion. And the audited financial statements, there's about, it's a 60-page document, and there is a lot of good information in that document. There's a management discussion and analysis that talks about a lot of the information we discussed in the Audit Committee. And again, does a very nice job in talking about some of the key variances, as well as factors that'll impact the district going forward. And that's something that management puts together and is part of the financial statements. Really is a very good summary of the activity for the year. But again, we did spend about an hour with the Audit Committee. And the district did end the year in very good financial condition. When we look at the district's financial condition, we really look at the year-end reserves and fund balance, and how the district is using those reserves and fund balances as part of your long-term planning. And the district is doing a very, very good job. And again, the audit results of a budget process that really you started almost, almost a year and a half, more than a year and a half ago, okay? So you're finally seeing the results of that process. And again, I'm pleased to report you ended the year in good financial condition. Overall, your reserves and fund balances did go up about $1.5 million. And again, the district does have several different reserves that you utilize as part of your budget process. The district uses reserves and fund balance. You used about $4.3 million as part of your budget process to support the budget. And as part of that, you're using those as part of the budget process. Again, very good job in doing that. In addition to using the reserves, you're also refunding the reserves. So at the end of the year, you're looking at the financial condition and refunding the reserves, and you did that about $3.9 million. So you're using reserves, you're funding the reserves, again, very positive from the long-term financial plan. One of the key reserves that are out there, your capital reserves, again, very, very positive reserve. It really helps support the local portion of a project. You have a little over $5.2 million in the different capital reserves that you have. And as you recall, the voters did vote to utilize some of the reserves this year. You utilized a little over $830,000 from the reserves, from the capital reserves this year. And again, to support the local portion or reduce the debt that's going to be issued for the project. So again, very positive from the long-term financial plan. So we did have a very good discussion about the financial statements. We also talked about internal controls, checks and balances, as part of any audit process. We have to go in and really understand the different processes and procedures that the district has in place over your financial cycles. So we spent a lot of time interviewing and talking with different individuals within the business office and understanding the process and procedures. And again, I'm pleased to report there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. We did have a few procedural items that we're recommending the district take a look at to enhance the checks and balances you have. We also identified four prior items we talked about that the district implemented. So again, very positive from the audit side of it. So again, overall, very good financial position, no material weaknesses, significant deficiencies. And again, the district is reacting to some of our recommendations. Very positive. Do you have any questions?
Okay. Well, thank you, Tom. Appreciate the summary. I'm sorry, Matt, did we, oh, okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming out.
Thanks, Tom.
Jamie, you want to just get right into an update on the capital project? Then we'll do strategic.
Sure. Sure, I wrote a little summary and then I was typing it, figured out what I wanted to say a little bit more. Okay, so we have basically two main things going on now. We're trying to finish up the new transportation facility, and we're also trying to finish up the high school kitchen. We took a tour, Tiffany and I did this morning of, today rather, of the kitchen, and they're making progress. That's again, looking at being finished around the first of the year. The high school, I mean, the new transportation facility, most of the paving has been done. Most of the parking lots have been striped. The building envelope, we're working on trying to get that completely sealed. We're just waiting for overhead doors now. Most of the work now, all the, pretty much most of the masonry is done, they're doing all the finish work. So sheetrock and paint and putting in tile and painting the ceiling walls. We got to get some doors in there so we can heat the floors, so that, because the maintenance bays, every surface in there gets painted, and it needs to be, you know, warmer than 40 degrees at night. Otherwise, the paint will never dry when they have put multiple coats on it. So now it's in the finishing phase. We're still planning on moving in, at Christmas time, with occupation over Christmas break this year. So in the building, you know, by January 1st of 2020. So everything's lining up. We're just waiting for a few things, like telephone lines have to be installed for the alarm system and the fax machine, and we're working with Verizon. But other than some nitty-gritty details, they're working. They tell us they're going to get done. So we're on time and on budget. As far as, we do see a change order coming, and that's, we, the polished concrete on the second floor is not going to work, because too many cracks appeared in the floor. It's like eight inches of concrete on top of metal, corrugated metal. It really has some hellacious cracks in it. So we're going to hide those cracks with epoxy and then epoxy the whole floor, as opposed to having polished concrete. We're trying to go for a look that's in the new auditorium and all the hallways, common areas, but it's not going to work out, so we're going to switch them up. Because we're picking a fluid type of coating, it's not going to delay our timeline. We still should be able to get in the building at that time, so. Things are moving. It looks great. If you drive by, it's pretty impressive now. That's it. Well, the safety and security project, we did have all the doors done. I mean, all the locks replaced in much of the building. I just got an email today from the contractor, some of our other locks and doors have shown up, so now they're scheduling revisiting some of the buildings where they actually have to replace whole doors. So as we go through that this fall and early winter in those buildings, they'll be working second shift of teams and people in our buildings as they cycle through and do all the doors and door entrances and whatnot that have to be replaced. Some of them are more complicated than others, so. I'm psyched to see that come along.
Just the feedback that I've received from some teachers, friends of mine, they absolutely love the new locks, not only from the safety and security standpoint, but just being able to get in and out of their classroom, and they've been really, really happy with it, so.
Yes, they really did a nice job installing them, too, and I'm thrilled to hear the staff like. It's very easy to secure yourself in that room. You push a button, you pull the shade down, you're done. They don't have to leave and try to use a key on the outside of the door or anything like that, so. Very, very, the, the whole idea of doing some of this is not just a security aspect of it, but the fact that we make staff and students feel safe in the building. You know, that's, you know, 50% of what we're trying to do, I think, is the attitude that not only do we care, but they have control over their own safety. I think that's a huge thing. And we're headed down that way. We'll look like, hopefully, we'll finish, probably, all of them won't be done until the end of next summer, because we're going to have to do some, some rearranging in three of the buildings as far as the offices. So that's going to be Eldon... So, that's gonna be Eldon, Reynolds, and Van Buren. Those three buildings have, you know, offices being moved and doorways being changed and holes cutting walls. Whenever you start doing that, you know, the SED has to prove it, then we have to bid. It's much more complicated than just replacing doors and locks. Like, we're able to move pretty quickly doing that. Anyway, those are the three major things going on. Any questions? We did take a bunch of the transportation people out a week or ten days, maybe fifty, sixty people Tiffany and I did. And took, we had two days in a row where we did lunchtime and then we did in the early evening. And we brought, you know, ten, twelve people through at a time so they could see where they're gonna be working. So, the union leadership, whoever could sign up for those things, and it was fully attended. Anybody, all the slots were filled. So, we'll try to do that again in a couple of weeks and get the people that we missed. I think that hands across the sea kind of a thing. Those are the people that are gonna be living there. We really wanna make sure. Of course, all the office staff and the mechanics have been over there. I'm anxious to get the rest of the drivers and attendants in there as well. You know, before it all opens, so they get kind of a sense of what's going on.
So, we're still on track? All the buses will be running out of there in January?
Yes. We're planning on, you know, we got a moving company we're negotiating with to move all the big things. None of the office furniture's coming over. They're getting new computers, new phones, new office furniture. So, all that stuff's being left behind at the current bus garage. What we're gonna do with the current bus garage really depends on how we finish up at the high school. So, we, how much money is gonna be left? And we should know in early November how we're doing once we see as they get more and more done. Because there probably won't be any more surprises, like no more asbestos, things like that. So, if the unknowns, if we can work our way through it, maybe we'll have some money left over to really turn to next spring in the old bus garage. What we're gonna do in there, I can't answer that, depends on how much money we have.
Think part of it too, Jamie, if I could just add, is looking at some, starting to evaluate funding the future recommendations. I think that's gonna play a role on which way the board wants to go with that. Because I always been talking about possibly putting in alternative program there along with maybe some of our special ed offices. But one of the proposals from the committee was to have Eldon as the alternative program with the district offices in that building. So, I think a little, a lot of it's gonna be right, timing and see, you know, what happens with funding the future.
Some more to come. It's exciting. It's gonna be really, really neat when both of those facilities are done completely and when our safety and security project is finished. I mean, keeping faith with the staff is really important to me and to all of us here at this table too. So, I think we're doing that.
Next, we'll get into our strategic plan updates. So, why don't we, we'll start with Ray Middle School since you guys start early. You gotta get up earlier. Twelve hours, all right, so. So, this is Ray Middle School's team. They're gonna report out on where they are with their strategic plan. So, it's your show.
So, I just wanted to take this opportunity to really commend the staff at Ray Middle School. They have worked all over the summer and early in this fall to really put together a plan that we're proud of and that we own at Ray Middle School. So, it's something that everyone in the school is aware of, and they know that these are our three big goals that we're working to this year. And here to tell you about some of our goals tonight, we have Joelle Furene, one of our sixth grade math teachers, Carla Smith, one of our sixth grade teaching assistants, Cheryl Morrison, one of our sixth grade teachers, Jenna Wolken, one of our school psychologists, and Kara Beck, one of our reading RTI teachers.
So, thank you for having us. Again, I'm Cheryl Morrison. I'm one of the sixth grade ELA and math teachers, and I'm gonna speak to our very first goal for the building. So, again, the district goal wants us to focus on improvement and growth and allowing and empowering students to achieve their personal best. So, we've done quite a bit with state assessment data and looking at how our students are performing. And our goal is right up there in the red. By May of two thousand and twenty, we are hoping to see a five percent increase in the median mastery level for literary and informational text. We're going to use the STAR reading assessment. We're gonna use our winter and spring benchmark data. We're looking at the cluster of key idea and details. So, we worked with Danielle Nahorny, and she provided us quite a bit of data regarding our current fifth and sixth, I'm sorry, our current sixth and seventh graders, looking at their fifth and sixth grade New York State ELA data. And we noticed that there were gaps in both grade levels around the key idea and detail questions. And while we outperformed several of the other BOSI's cohort, we had some pretty significant gaps with key idea and details. So, rather than wait until August to see if what we are doing is working, we're going to use the STAR assessment data. What we believe is by looking at the cluster, if we see a five percent increase on the median mastery level, it should transfer over to the state. So, right now, let's say we had four hundred kids in the building, the two hundredth child, the middle child, is reaching seventy seven, seventy seven percent mastery of key idea and details, which is not terrible, but we would like to see more of our students reaching even higher. So, with a five percent increase, we would see, hopefully, closing the gap for the BOSI's cohort or even outperforming. That would be our ultimate goal. So, we have a couple of ways of doing this. First, cross-curricular vocabulary instruction. We're working together as a team to create specific vocabulary terms we can focus on as a building. Every couple of weeks, we'll look at a new word, and these are words that the students are more likely to see in the questions such as best, explain, demonstrate. Those are words that seem to trick them up in multiple choice, multiple choice questions. Secondly, we're using our PLC in team meeting time to talk about strategies we can explicitly incorporate in our lessons around the key idea and details. Lastly, we're using common assessments and the data from those to gauge how we're doing in between the STAR benchmark.
Okay. The district goal number two is to promote collaboration, innovation, and flexibility to prepare students for their futures. As a leadership team, we felt this district goal paired perfectly with our building goal to establish a strong MTSS program at Ray. So, our building goal is the MTSS team at Ray will collaborate to create a building-wide support system, offering tiered interventions at tier one, two, and three with both academic and behavioral interventions. As a district, we are in process of transitioning from our RTI programs into a district-embedded NTSS multi-tier support system. This means moving more towards a proactive approach that covers social, emotional behavior and academic strategies for all students in the building, not just the students that are already struggling. Hopefully, this change in mindset will allow us to catch more students earlier before their needs become more significant. Our goal is to really invest and establish a sound process using MTSS to help make data-driven decisions for the whole child and for every student.
There's a lot that goes into building a multi-tiered system of supports. We thought a good starting point was to add a behavior screening tool. We currently have STAR for our academic screening tool, but we're missing that behavior piece. So, as you probably all know, that the five elementary buildings are using BYMS two. So, our goal is to expand that to sixth grade this year and see how it goes. And hopefully, we can further expand that to seventh grade in the future. So, this, our action steps are, the sixth grade teachers will complete three benchmarks using the BYMS two data to rate their students this school year. They're currently in the process of completing the fall benchmark and then the winter benchmark in January and then the spring in May.
If you actually wanna skip down to look at action step three, three C, to develop a data analysis process. So, after we give the BYMS and collected all of our benchmark data for social, emotional, and academics, we need to analyze that data. And this action step allows us to develop a clearer process for staff and can have consistent protocol and universal language which makes sense of the data. We will establish our protocol for teachers and staff to guide them through sifting through the data and where to focus next. And this common language and data points will allow us to make more proactive and informed decisions for students across teams and grade levels. And then if we go back up to B, creating an intervention bank for teachers. So, we've already started with this bank through our RTI system, including both behavior and academic strategies. But we've noticed lots of our strategies focus on tier two and tier three. So, we, since we're becoming more proactive with our instructional moves, our goal is to really beef up our intervention bank for tier one. This will allow teachers to use and access tools to analyze their data and see what their next move might be to see what students really need. We, this tool will assist us to be able to actually make better decisions with the strategies we're providing inside the classroom.
I just wanna add with that data protocol, in case you guys hear it in the building, we're gonna use something called Grow the Green protocol to look at the BYMS two data. We typically, when we look at data, we wanna look at those kids in red first, and that's just where a lot of our resources go, and we wanna look, you know, see how they're doing. But this forces us to look first at the green, so what we're doing well and expand upon that. So, it's grow the green, mellow the yellow, and stop the spread of the red. If you hear it.
So, the district goal number three was looked at by our culture and climate committee. We decided to look at attendance rates. So, we had some data pulled also by Danielle Nahorny. And we found that thirty-six percent of our fifth and sixth graders last year, so that would be our current sixth and seventh graders, were missing ten or more days of school. So, we kind of took a look at the data and had a big discussion among the committee and decided that we wanted to try and decrease that number by five percent. So, in order to do that, we are going to monitor the data. So, the committee itself is going to be looking at that data regularly. We're meeting at least once a month. So, we'll be looking at that. We'll also be sharing it with teachers. When we shared at our staff meeting, teachers kind of talked about wanting to know that data, and so that's something that we're gonna be sharing with everybody. We've thought of different ways to engage the students and the parents. So, specifically with students, we're increasing some of our after-school programs. We are also building on our current literary luncheon program. Students are invited down to the library. They're read to for an entire week, and so we're bringing in more people from the community to be a part of that program. We're also creating a student advisory committee, and that's gonna be a group of students that are going to offer their advice on how we can improve the culture and climate of Ray. And then specifically for parents, we've looked at creating online parent resources. We have Jen Sawyer, who has quite a large knowledge base in this area. So, we're looking at maybe creating some videos that we could post online for parents on how to access school tool, how to access Google Classroom. A lot of teachers are using that, but parents aren't sure how it works. We're looking at continuing and providing more information to families on resources such as tutoring and counseling that maybe they don't realize are out there. And then, we're also starting a new program to collaborate with the community, something I know they do at the high school, to create kind of like a food pantry for students to bring food home on weekends and on the breaks. We are also going to celebrate using Positivity Project, good character traits and attendance. So, you know, with that attendance piece, we have, every month, we, or excuse me, every week, we nominate students based on Positivity Project character strengths. And we're taking pictures of the students and posting them, and they're being recognized in our weekly newsletters as well. And then, we, in addition to that, we have positive referrals. So, students can be nominated for a positive referral based on anything that we're seeing, attendance being one of those things, and a letter goes home, and it's, it's a really positive thing for the students and the parents to see. We also have staff advocates who are going to kind of like talk to students, maybe track attendance. That would kind of depend on the student. The staff, last Friday, whatever Friday was the PDC day, we actually all chose our advocates, or we chose our students that we are going to be advocates for. Every staff member was there and chose students to be an advocate for. They're also going to be, we've asked them to do sort of like a personalized early outreach. So, students that are kind of on that bubble, we notice they've been out a lot. We have systems in place where letters go home, but sometimes those tend to be sort of punitive, and we want it to be like a positive. So, you know, that advocate might reach out and say, hey, we've missed you. You know, we hope everything is, is okay. We can't wait till you're back. Maybe reach out to parents, maybe even reach right out to students. Students have email addresses as well. And then, last but not least, we, that same day, also participated in a poverty simulation, but we're also doing a book study on teaching with poverty in mind. So, you know, our goal would be for our staff to kind of learn and maybe adapt our methods based on what we learned from the book study and also the simulation that we did.
Jenna, if you can send an email, I absolutely loved that red, yellow, green thing, that was awesome. Just for the attendance, what was that statistic you said for sixth and seventh graders?
So, it was actually thirty-six percent of this year's current sixth and seventh graders. So, we had Danielle pull last year's fifth graders and our sixth graders.
So, what was this statistic again?
I'm sorry. Thirty-six percent, so that's just under three hundred kids are missing that many days of school, so.
You said ten days of school?
Nine or more.
Not nine or more days of school?
Nine or more days of school. And some of that's just.
Is that excused or unexcused?
So, we, either way, we really wanna pull students in because even if there are nine excused absences, so if mom calls and says, oh, there's a morning appointment, I can't get him in in the afternoon, then he's absent for a full day of school. So, technically, it's considered excused in that instance, but we really wanna pull students in so that they're there every single day. And we have a lot of students who are, you know, have different issues that are going to miss more school. So, we really wanna focus on those kids that are right on the cusp, the students that are missing nine, ten, eleven, twelve days. And it just adds up faster than I think people realize. You miss two days in September, a day in October, three days in November to go on an extended Thanksgiving recess with your family, and then you're already at the nine days.
I, I think it's terrific what you're doing with trying to really pull in the parents and students to your action plan. So, you know, what, the student advisory council and inviting parents into the process and your student advocates, I, I just think that's really exciting stuff, and I can't wait to hear, you know, about, about your results. I'm curious about the BYMS thing. Have you had to do training with all of the faculty to teach them how to use that tool and what it means?
So, Carrie Lamachia and myself, we met with every single sixth grade team during their team planning time, I think about two weeks ago. So, we got to show them the platform, walk them through it, educate them a little bit about why, why it's here, about the mental wellness committee. And so, it was like forty minutes, and then they, now they're doing it right now, and I think it's going really well. I think an obstacle that they're facing at this time is it's taking a little bit longer than they expected, but they're trying to rate all the kids together during their team planning. So, we're recommending maybe like your kids that you're not sure about rate together as a team, but then we assign them to their homeroom students so they can rate, not the easier ones, but students that you pretty much know their ratings like that on their own, just to save some time. Because right now, it takes about five, ten minutes a student to rate.
Okay. Great job, guys, really. Some excellent, excellent goals. Very good. Thank you, Ray Middle School. Okay, so, oh, okay, so next, we will hear from Reynolds Elementary. Come on up. Come on up, Reynolds, and we will see where they are at in their process.
I would like to welcome my team here. This is Shayna Bach, third-grade teacher. Megan Eschman, she's school social worker. Therese Carroll and Eric, she's elementary regular ed. And Jamie Young is special educator, co-teaching team of fifth grade. And Katie Reeve, fourth-grade teacher. So, I'd like to thank them. I'm very fortunate to work alongside them each and every day. They're the ones that are on the front lines doing the hard work, so I owe it all to them. So, I do appreciate them, so I'm going to turn it over to them.
Scroll that to number one for us. So, you can take a little look at our first goal. This is actually a goal that we had last year that we are carrying over into this year as well. So, we're going to continue to follow our data on the New York State ELA assessment, and we would like to continue to seek a five percent growth in proficiency in our written expression scores. And if you scroll to the next slide, this is the data that we used in order to come up with this goal. When we came up with this goal last year, we really wanted to narrow in on writing on the New York State assessment, because when we analyzed our scores there, that was the area that we saw we were really, our students were losing the most points was in the written versus the reading, which we felt we had prepped them fairly well for. It wasn't the multiple choices much as the written. So, when we looked at the written parts, there are seven written constructive response questions on grade three, grade four, and grade five New York State ELA exams, and six of the seven are scored a one or a two or a zero points. And then, there's one longer response, which is scored out of four points. And so, we took an average of the points, or the seven questions, we came up with an average where we, students were meeting with proficiency. So, in order to meet with proficiency, that would be receiving two out of two points for the two-point questions and receiving three or four points on the four-point questions. And so, if you look at our data, we went back to our seventeen and eighteen data from a year ago this past spring and compared that to how our students did this past spring in April to look at, did we meet that five percent last year? And in fourth and fifth grade, we were able to meet and exceed that. In our third grade, we actually had gone down a little bit, but we know that's kind of a tricky grade level. It's their first experience taking a New York State test when they get to third grade. So, that's, you know, it's a new game for them. It's now also on the computers, which a lot of the kids are still working on those skills when they're eight years old. So, we had, though, the glory of being able to look at our cohorts. So, we were able to take our third-grade group of students that took the test, not this past spring, but the year before, and look at how they did when they went up to fourth grade. So, we followed the same group of kids from third grade to fourth grade, and we did see that they met with a six-point-one percent increase in their scores from third grade to fourth grade, and our fourth to fifth grade had met with an eleven-point-two percent increase. And so, that is something that we want to continue. We want to continue to see an additional five percent this year gain in our New York State testing when we take it again in the spring. And we have, we're going to continue to work on some of the strategies that we had implemented last year, because they did seem to overall work for us, but we've also added in some additional strategies we're going to use. And I'll let my little work cohort explain that to you.
We're big into the Positivity Project, and the kids are really involved and love it, and we've done a ton of discussing. And this year, we threw in, let's do some written responses based on the Positivity Project. So, each grade level is trying once a week to do a little more written response with that, to try and give them the opportunity to support what they see, as well as what they read and what they hear. We're going to keep working on New York State rubrics, anturkeys, using what the state has put out there to guide our instruction and our expectations for students. We've also tried to get kids to analyze each other's writing so that they can look for the good points, and hopefully, they'll learn from each other what to put in there to make it successful. We have our student council going pretty strong this year, and they had to write, I don't want to call it a resume, but they had to write a speech, they had to write a speech and then say it in front of the class. So, we're starting to move into using it for more career-type paths as you can when you're, you know, third, fourth, and fifth graders. And then, still working on the district rubrics that we, the ELA committees have been putting together.
So, much like our first goal, we did keep the same general goal for our number two, which was to maintain an eighty percent or more of all the students in the low-risk range for the scales on the BYMS. So, last year, when we presented to you, we were using School Tool as a data collection method, and we recognized that not all teachers were using it for the same reason. Some were using it to monitor behavior plans, some were using it to record incidents, and some just weren't using it with efficacy, as in November was different than December with what they determined to put in. So, we decided that the BYMS would be a much better, a more quantitative goal for us to use that, as we are already currently doing it. So, we are looking for eighty percent of our students in that typical or strength-based range, which would be our green. We're trying to grow the green, as well as RAY was with that lovely little thing I don't remember. So, with how we're trying to do it, so from last year, moving on to this year, we have the Positivity Project, and we, last year, we moved forward with our students and teachers at the grade levels running the meetings, and it was a tremendous success. So, it took the pressure off of our P2 leadership team, as well as put the ownership on the students and the teachers to see how are we going to increase students' engagement, as well as all of the character strengths. So, we also, this year, have the beauty of having district-level mentors from the high school come down to our Reynolds. So, we actually have a third one. We only had two last year, and now we have three, and we, I strategically placed them in classrooms that have a significant higher level of yellow. So, while RAY did mention to you that the red zone in the BYMS are those kids that get a lot of our resources continuously, the yellow are where we're trying to target because it's easier to slip them down into the green than it is for maybe a red to jump two levels in one rating scale. So, our district-level mentors, as well as we have a silent mentor program, it's very informal. It's something that I match up our yellow kids with from last year with willing and able staff members. It's informal, it's confidential, it is something that they do to build a relationship with a staff member. Kids don't even know what's happening, but they just know that they have another trusted adult in the building, and that is hopefully going to slip those kids back down into the green when we do our BYMS screening, because we are doing our BYMS screening three times this year rather than just the two. And I think that'll just get us more data to really see how our interventions are working with our kids. And if you just scroll down just one more, you can see there, I know it's very tiny on my screen, and, but you can see, we actually do have a significant portion of our students are in the green right now. These are the new things that we're doing this year, so we are doing BYMS three times. We have the luxury of having two wonderful therapy dogs coming into our classrooms, and that is building up kids' reading abilities, as well as where it's a tool we're able to use for the social-emotional piece as well. I was part of the mental wellness committee over the summer and last year with Toni Cardamom as a social worker to develop the social-emotional learning curriculum. So, we have now implemented that at all of our elementary schools. So, right now, every student over the next six years, we're hoping the kindergarten crew this year, when they enter RAY, they will all, from all five buildings, have received the same emotional education that their other persons, people in their cohorts have received from Mac or Eldon, and we're entering into RAY with all of this wonderful knowledge. So, not only are we hopeful that in the next, you know, five to six years, that's where they'll be, but also with their gaining tools on how to identify feelings, how to manage strong feelings or embarrassment, how to calm down anger. So, that's the curriculum, as well as the restorative practices that we are starting to implement only as a, not only as a staff, but inside the classrooms.
So, this is our new, oh, oh, yeah, I didn't even hear my own voice. This is our new goal for this year, where we are going along with the district goal of ensuring that we have that equal access and opportunity and choice for all students. So, our goal is also similar to RAY, that we're hoping to increase that daily attendance by our students, and we're hoping to do that by about five percent decrease in absences. And some of our action steps that we have here are school-wide events. We have, we used to have third-grade only, used to do a career day where we would invite parents or relatives in to talk about their career, and we would do it just one time a year, and we're hoping to increase that to a school-wide career day, where we can invite a lot of people in and talk to all the different grade levels about all sorts of different careers. We've had dentist hygienists, we've had construction workers, we've had engineers in the past for third grade, so we're hoping to see a whole lot of diversity in the types of careers that are going to come in and talk to the kids. We have literacy night, where we had an actual author come to our building during the day for the kids, and then he stayed around at night for when the families could come. The kids created posters and trifolds where they read a book and then created all the information, questions, and pictures and everything, and that was highly successful last year, so we're hoping to do that again this year. The science fair has also been successful the last two years. I think this year, we, this past year, we actually ran out of room and had to move it from the cafeteria to the gym, because we had so many students participating with it, and they really enjoyed that. The talent show is fourth and fifth grade? I think it's fourth and fifth grade.
I remember, I should know.
There we go. Thank you. The art showcase, our art teacher puts on a wonderful showcase where the kids create the art projects, and the families come in at night to come look at it. And then, our grade-level PLC, we're going to be focusing on grouping students in lots of different ways throughout the building. We have a lot of fifth-grade students that will come down and read to second graders. I think there's a couple other pairings where fourth grade reads to second graders, and then the second graders read to the fourth graders. So, lots of different abilities working together, even within our classrooms. We have heterogeneous grouping, we have homogeneous grouping, working with lots of different adults, TAs, co-teachers, you know, special ed teachers, everything. And then, within the building, we're building a lot of flexible seating which is happening. It's kind of starting to spread a little bit. Myself, I can kind of speak to that. I've been doing flexible seating in my classroom, I'm going on my fifth year of doing it, and just lots of different seating options for the kids, where not every kid is sitting at a desk with a chair, and that's your seat for the whole year. We have yoga balls, we have wobble stools, we have kids sitting on the floor in gaming chairs, we have kids sitting on the floor on beanbag chairs, and throughout the whole day, they don't have to stay in that one spot. They can pick and move if they get uncomfortable, they know they're allowed to move to a new seat. So, the room looks empty when you walk in, but a lot of the seats get put away at night, and they just pull them out in the morning, and if they're done with it, they put it away and they move to a new seat. And we're seeing a lot more of that within the building, a lot more yoga balls in the classrooms. We've got the great fifth-grade wing that has lots of different seating options and grouping options, just amazing flexible seating. And you see, at least in my classroom, my kids are stoked when they walk through the door, and they're the first three kids there. They're like, yes, I'm the first one here! And they sign up for lunch, and they get their seat, because that's what they have to do. And they're excited to come to school, and they tell their parents, like, I'm excited, I want the yoga ball today, and the parents tell me that, like, they love it. So, seeing that that's now going throughout the building, it's amazing, and I think that's going to be huge, getting these kids to want to come to school, because they get to pick what they sit in. And Spirit Week, we're going to do a couple different Spirit Weeks this year through the PTA with a lot of help from them, and we're also wearing red every first Friday of every month, just to build community within the building of Reynolds.
I would like to mention that the Spirit Weeks, we worked with Melissa with the graph at the below to target the months that we are seeing our highest absenteeism, to hopefully increase students' willingness and want to, desire to come to school, as well as a purpose, you know, that exciting thing, I get to dress like my teacher today, or I get to dress, you know, like Miss Seshman today. You know, so that's what we're targeting, those specific months with our events in conjunction with the PTA, as well as student council. So, we're open to questions if you have any.
I just think that you've been quite prudent this year with your action plan, keeping two of the three goals. I think if those are the things you've decided are key to your success, I think it's great to keep the same goals and keep plugging away, rather than try to tackle, you know, boil the ocean. So, I appreciate your approach.
Thank you. Yeah, we appreciate the feedback, as well as we like the goals that can help, or that can, every staff member has the ability to help us, rather than just it all being on classroom-level teachers and no one else. So, that was a big part of our thinking.
Very good. Thank you, guys. Doing very well. Keep up the great work. Okay, so, so I would ask the board if it would be okay, the next two items, which enrollment for beds is a quick report, but also the June Regents' graduation date. Joe should be here in a little while, and I prefer him to be here, if that's okay, if we just move on and then go back to that. When he gets here, just, I want to make sure if there's questions, and he can walk us through that. Is that okay? All right, so, we'll come back to that. Thank you.
Senator, this is what Policy Committee has approved. Anybody have any questions on them?
I had a question on, ah, looks like it's number eighty-one-ten, and there's a lot of red there, Curriculum Development, Resources, and Evaluation. And it says there, "The board will direct a continuing evaluation of the curriculum as part of a program of instructional improvement. All aspects of the curriculum will be subjected to a searching and critical analysis in an attempt to improve the learning and growth of students." I'm just wondering what that means. You know, what does that mean we're going to do?
Yeah, and I think you go down to Curriculum Evaluation, right?
Right. The first paragraph under Curriculum Evaluation.
Yeah, and maybe a question for the Policy Committee. Did that come from like one of the templates we got?
Erie One.
Yeah, a lot of the red did, yes.
So, one of the things that we've been doing is trying to streamline the policies that come from Erie One and try to, and try to make sure that we're incorporating some of that language, and just so when there are policy changes, we can rely on them as well. Really, it's just, I think the intent is to make sure that we are encouraging, you know, our curriculum designers and everyone to think about how to ensure that they're conforming to the state mandates and how they're changing. I mean, it's very similar to what we're doing in terms, with Renee and Toni, changing with the science and math curriculum, all of those different things. So, basically, it's saying that's what we're going to do in a very interesting manner. Some of the wording, I will say, and, you know, we will make our own tweaks to some of those policies as well, if we see that it doesn't necessarily line up with what we want it to. But I think overall, the intent is to adopt those policies if we feel that they meet our needs.
I think with that particular section as well, that part that you pulled out, we should always be, there should be like a curriculum review plan happening all the time, and I think that's just our, the wording encourages that to always be happening, so we don't remain stagnant and just constantly changing as the world is changing so our students are prepared, but also the searching, critical analysis, and attempt to improve. And it is our responsibility, we don't technically do it, but it's our responsibilities aboard to make sure that that's always happening, and we're looking at the data to make the best decisions where funding goes, where teachers may be moved to, to assist the administration to serve our students.
Then we can move on to new business. So, Joe gets here. So this is resolved that the Board of Education approved its Bonneville Central School District Board of Education goals for 2019, 2020 pursuant to the attached. Do I have a motion? Jim, second. Jeff moved? Was it Brian? Okay, Brian? Brian and Jim?
So basically, just for the board, so what we tried to do and we put in the Friday letter is from the last board meeting's discussions, we incorporated what we decided on. So I think that, I haven't heard anything, but I think that we accomplished that. And so I guess my question would be is, does it read right as far as some of the changes that we discussed as it relates to the, to language, to load and investigating that at the, at Ray Middle School? That's the one I was more, because that we, we kind of massaged a little bit. Okay.
Posed?
Okay, good.
All those in favor? Posed, carried nine zero. Textbook adoption. Resolved that the Board of Education approved the textbook adoption of Love, Hate and Other Filters by author Samara Amid to be used in English 11 classes at Baker High School pursuant to the attached. Do I have a motion? Kim? Matt, second. Any questions? All those, all those in favor? Opposed, carried nine zero. Disposal of surplus instructional material resolved at the Board of Education approved the disposal of surplus instructional material and equipment pursuant to the attached. Do I have a motion? Jim, Jeff, any questions? All those in favor? Posed, carried nine zero. Disposal of surplus vehicles. Resolved at the Board of Education approved the disposal of surplus vehicles pursuant to the attached. Do I have a motion? Jim and Matt? Any questions?
How do we dispose of them?
What we do is, once the board authorizes me, we, we contact Auctions International. They come on the campus, they take pictures of all of them, there's a little description. This data that's on there with it goes with it and it goes up on Auctions International. We've, we've doubled and tripled the amount of money we get for these vehicles in the last five years by doing that. So people from all over the Northeast coming by. Many of them are drivable, but they just are, will not pass inspection to move children. If you notice the 2008, 2006, they're at the end of their useful life, as far as we're concerned. We used them up.
Any, any other questions? All those in favor? Posed, carried nine zero. Acceptance of independent audit report of the Bonneville Central School District Corrective Action Plan from the leadership report. The year ending June 30th, 2019, and the district's corrective action plan that was presented by Mr. Thomas Zuber, CPA, from the auditing firm under reports items, leadership report, October 21st, 2019. Do I have a motion? Jeff and Jim? Any questions? I, I will have to say, I think we got a better explanation in the Audit Committee.
I agree. I thought he did a nice job in the Audit Committee more so. I think we had more explanation in that committee meeting than we did here. I do want to point out, I, one of the big changes is related to, Jamie, tell me what it's called. So the liabilities that we have to recognize for health and retirement benefits.
Oh, gas be forty-five.
So that's continued to, to come into play and how our financial statements look.
Right. It is, it is lower than last year at this time.
Right.
But we still have a big number. You know, it's one and a half times the size of our budget, it's 150 million.
The other thing that I want to point out is that Jamie and Tiffany also already designed the corrective action plan around a couple of the things that were in the management letter. I think overall, they were pretty minor. Jamie and Tiffany worked really hard with the public library to try to get them to go along with some of the recommendations, but overall, you know, from my perspective, there wasn't anything significant. I think the other thing is that they identified the cybersecurity as an area that we should focus and that's something that we've already been doing and have identified, so I think that was very positive.
I, I will say, I think it would have behooved them to do a little bit more, maybe. I think that's the shortest auditor's report to the board I've ever seen. And I don't know how you improve upon that, and I know we have an Audit Committee, but I just, I think what we learned in the Audit Committee, there's some other little tidbits, it would have helped other board members, so maybe next time.
I can talk to him about that.
Yeah, maybe next time.
Bring the same detail to the table that you talked about in the Audit Committee.
Is that, is that a result of moving from an hour-long meeting to a 10-minute summary?
Oh, I don't have any idea.
I don't know, I think.
They always have been short. I mean, the Audit Committee meeting lasts an hour and the most we have in a regular meeting is maybe 20 minutes. He didn't do 20 minutes.
He may just be trying to summarize as much as he can so that he can constrain the time he's taking.
I will have to say, Ray, Ray usually, used to do a really nice job and I think if this guy was on there too long, he's not as bad as when we had both these, but if this one, it's like, what's the phrase, you want to stick a fork in your eye if you have to listen too long? So, um, a little.
It wasn't about the audit, that was about something else, which will gain, will remain nameless.
But I, I, I think next time, yeah, he should, there's some highlighted things, maybe he could improve upon it to the board report.
And maybe that needs to be part of, you know, I mean, literally, the meeting was 5:30 to 6:30 and then we jumped into this. So I think maybe what we need to do in future years is to kind of help them because again, if we didn't necessarily set the expectation of what we really wanted him to cover in this meeting, I don't, I can't say that it's fair to then blame him for doing that. So I think that's one of the things that the Audit Committee, you know, let's, next year, let's make sure that we schedule the meeting. So we've got a half an hour, maybe, you know, an hour presentation, it's just not enough. So you do an hour to the Audit Committee, you do a little bit of prep to say, these are the highlights that we want to focus on.
Right. Yeah, I think giving him some guidance to talk about. Geez, that's pretty interesting. We like these five or six things, could you really emphasize that when you go in front of the full board? Which is really the things you're talking about right here, which he did talk about. Right.
And we, we could certainly talk to him about that here, but, I mean, with us as a cabinet, but maybe the Audit Committee prior to, we could say, okay, you know, after we get all the information, we could say, okay, let's keep, you know, when you go out to the, to the board and to the public, let's highlight these areas.
Right.
Kind of give them guidance from that committee so that the board has a voice as well and what they want to hear.
Sure. I mean, I thought it was a good audit. Audit was good, I mean, we were okay.
The audit was good, there's just, there was, like, the reserve we had for the self-insurance. You know, you see that number there and all of a sudden, don't think that's going to be there in another year.
Right.
Because that's going to go away.
And he did mention that, right.
Yeah, there's significant things in there.
This is a one-time shot where that's helping you that, do that.
Yep. Questions? All those in favor? I, posed, carried nine zero. And so we're down into board, roundtable. Talking about resolutions.
Yes, I, I put in the Friday letter, kind of left it short and sweet, but what we discussed, so we discussed Resolution four, five, six, nine, 19, and 20. Is there, I mean, we could discuss, I don't know if we need further discussion here, but I, I kind of made it short, sweet, so that for Brian, that it's, when he gets there, it's, it's much more manageable. Is there any questions related to what we have? And are there more that you would like me to add to this list?
Just for clarity on number nine.
Number nine, yep.
Do we know locally? Because during their description, they say, "While some districts have the ability to work with municipalities to establish these reduced speed zones, that authority does not exist statewide." Do you know how that impacts us here in B-Ville?
It's, it's a local decision. They've given us the option to do it. So what we do may be different than, than Liverpool, but it is.
But for Baldonsville specifically, we're able to work with?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
It's a, yep, the board, that's your decision.
So generally, this one wouldn't impact us?
No.
This is more for districts that aren't allowed to work? Doesn't appear that this one impacts Baldonsville necessarily directly.
No. A lot of these, you know, what I, what I found over the years is, is, yeah, you're, you're right, Jeff. A lot of these that come forward, these things, it seems like are specific to a school district. So what would happen is maybe this particular thing with the, with the speed zone cameras happens, you know, on Long Island somewhere. So a school district sees it as an issue and may bring it forward because it's specific to their school, but not, you know.
Interesting you say that, because this one is actually a NISBA one, so.
This, I'm sorry.
This one is a NISBA one, proposed by NISBA, not a school district.
Yeah, and that's what I noticed, most of them are NISBA ones this year instead of individual.
But yeah, it seems like this one impacts just selected districts, not everybody.
Yeah.
I think the, the cameras on the buses works the same way.
Yes. Inside the bus, yep.
What determines what speed limit will be set near a school? Because they're different in different places. It might be 15, 20, 25.
I don't, I don't know if that, I don't know if that's law enforcement or the state or, I don't know.
We talked about, yeah, we talked about the municipality, but we've got two townships in a village that.
That have different speeds.
Yeah, and I, I'm just curious because I've noticed them, different ones in North Syracuse and Liverpool and Baldonsville and what's out by McNamara is different from what's in another place.
Good question, yeah.
I can tell you how.
Oh.
The school district can partner with the town, the municipality, request either if it's a state road, the state, or if it's a county maintained road with the county.
Like, we supported, supported a man's efforts six or seven years ago to reduce the speed limit on River Road from like 50 miles an hour to 40. Because he had people going literally 100 miles an hour by his house. If you've been down to the house where the guy's got his own private miles per hour reader that's got a solar thing on the top of it. He came to see me and then.
Really?
That was his, that's his personal device because he was, he built a house there and then realized, Jamie, sometimes at night I got people going by, by my house at 90 miles an hour. It's crazy because it was 55. So he said, would you, would you help, support my efforts with the county? So I wrote a letter to the county, to our county legislatures, and then CC'd it to the Highway Department in the county, supporting this guy's thing along with the town, and they eventually changed it. So school districts can work like that with individual people. I know there's a move now, they're like, I'd like to lower the speed limit or maybe put a, a street light up at the corner of Hicks Road, you know where those five roads comes together? Right on River Road and Hicks? To see if they could do something there because they're worried about somebody getting killed there, especially with all the traffic going to the Y now. So, so there's, so the, you know, the town supervisor, you know, will call me from Lysander or wherever and say, geez, would you support this? I'm going to write a letter to support that effort to put a light in there just to make people slow down because you got, you know, Mac is, I mean, Palmer's right there. So that's, generally, that's kind of a local decision, so the speed limits are going to be all over the place.
It does say that it's determined on a case-by-case basis.
Yes, that is correct. Based on an individual school district's needs or how the town or village feels about it. Everybody's kind of got to work together to make those kind of things happen. Anyway, I've done it once here, I'm about to do it again.
Any other comments?
So, proposed Resolution five, I'm, this just happens to be my passion and so you just let me know if I'm being unrealistic here, but it says there, "Concern with compromising quality." And I think that's a few words that really pack a lot of, a lot in there. The resolution says absolutely nothing about maintaining or improving quality. It only talks about costs and.
Efficiencies, yes.
Efficiency, right. So, right, just requirements, what do we have to do, costs, trends, and other aspects, but never specifically calls out the quality of the education we're providing to our most vulnerable students. And so I just think if, you know, if that resolution is going to pass and there's nothing in there about the quality of the special education we're providing the students, that would be absolutely criminal, that we're just focused on cost.
Yep.
Is that, is that an area? Is that obviously an area that we'll make sure we speak to? Is there anything we, or I could put in here to strengthen, I don't want to say argument, but real argument? Because we really, because I, I absolutely 100% agree with you. We are not going to allow these kids to become a number or a dial sign. So, let, you know what, let me, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. So Brian, you are our, you are our guy, aren't you? So how do you feel in terms of being able to speak to Christie's point and, you know, being able to do that? I mean, because I don't know if you necessarily need to come up with anything if Brian's comfortable in relaying that information. So I think that, that.
That's a good point, yeah.
Because you won't be there. Again, you are, you are not the delegate.
And I keep saying to myself.
Brian's our delegate, no.
But I can't, you're right.
No, I don't have a problem with it. Yeah, I can, I can speak to the fact that it's probably more important about the quality of what we're teaching than the, the different costs and trends, even though that's all important too. But, yeah, I won't have a problem speaking towards that.
Is there some sort of process, Joan? Do you remember how they do, we can actually change the wording or insert that in and propose, like, not to speak to it, but actually present the same thing, but with the adding of that wording?
I, I think you can, you can, you can suggest it when you're there. You can, you can do almost anything you want when it's your turn to speak. I imagine you're going to have.
Or wasn't there a time period where we could?
It's all a comment period.
Yes.
So my guess is that we won't be the only people that are saying that. And so they'll actually talk about changing the resolution to incorporate other language. And so they will make modifications to it. It's, it's crazy the way they follow Robert's rules. It's, it's pretty wild. And so there will be a motion to make a change to the resolution. And again, ultimately, all of the delegates have to vote on any change to the language. But again, I think it's important that we do have a voice in that to say that we can't look, just, just look at numbers. We have to look at the quality of the education and individualized education for these kids.
Yeah, I was just wondering if we had to submit prior to the meeting, a proposal with the changes and then it's discussed on the floor. I can't remember.
No, most always it's done on the floor. I, I don't think I've ever seen anybody submit anything ahead of time. You know, and, and I, I will say, just by talking to so many people from other districts, there are a lot of districts that already don't fulfill the special ed needs that they should be fulfilling according to New York State law. So I, I think even if they did this study, they'd be like, oh, wow, a lot of people aren't even doing what they're supposed to be doing. So.
Didn't New York State get flagged by that, by the federal government when they did, like audits of the state, that we actually didn't, even surprised that New York State didn't rank well in the area of special education, which is amazing because we're here and we have an incredible program. It's hard to imagine that. And I know programs aren't up to our standard, but that the state as a whole is very deficient in that area.
Well, they're, they're deficient and they have stricter regulations in other states, but I will tell you, I'm hearing horror stories from other states as well. So I think even sometimes the federal guidelines aren't even being fulfilled. It's just that they're not being checked, they're like, oh, well. So I, I don't know how much discussion. I'm curious to see the results of this, Brian, when you get through, how much discussion and if there's any changes, or if they just decided they don't want to go for it.
Well, for each of these, now, these propositions that we have here are the ones that we're concerned about, correct? Okay. Now, they're going to go over all the other ones too. So, but the only ones that, that we're concerned about, that I need to speak on are these one, these right here.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, good to go.
Unless the board saw something else that they want to add to it, and I could do that tomorrow because.
Yeah, I haven't seen anything yet.
I guess just to clarify, like, if you see 10 people ahead of you speak on the same topic, you don't feel.
Like if you see ten people ahead of you speak on the same topic, you don't feel, you don't feel obligated to say the same thing.
Yeah.
Except for number five.
And the, and the ones I brought up last week, the ones I brought up last week, I don't necessarily, you know, wasn't, you know, advocating that we have to speak on those. I just wanted to publicly say in our meeting that those were some of my concerns with, with their, with their proposals. So.
Okay.
You know, it just depends on the length of the meeting, amount of people talking on each topic and things like that. But I did want to, you know, just make my thoughts known at this meeting on those propositions.
Yeah, and they were perfect, and that's, um, you know, I summarized all those. And, and I agree with, with Jeff, you know, if there's ten people ahead, you know, all right, they, they got the point across. Except for number five. Because I agree with Christie on that.
Gives you an idea of when you can take your breaks too.
Okay.
It's about it, okay?
So, yeah, so Brian, I, I have everything. Don't even worry about it. I will bring this. And, um, I'll have it for you there, and I'll just give it to you on Friday, to make it life easier, okay? Okay, so, uh, so next, um, for leadership is the two reports, beds. And Joe's not here, so I'll do the best I can. I, I text him and, and we're, we're not going to wait because he may not be here till nine o'clock. So, the problem is, I can't make this bigger. So why don't we start with Bed's Day snapshot for the enrollment? What this, this is, so you know Bed's Day was, um, a week ago. This report, I, I just want to make clear, is not that, okay? Th- this report here is, um, is a, is a snapshot. These aren't factual numbers. It's, it's a estimate. The beds report that gets submitted to the state, that won't be available for January till the new year. But, um, basically what you're looking at is, is, um, on the report, and this is so small, but at each grade level. So you have K through twelve, and it shows our numbers with a total enrollment of fifty-four oh one, okay? And then it breaks down five oh four IEP students, Hispanic, and so forth. And really, I mean, it, the information's right there. So I don't, I don't know if there's any specific questions or related to our numbers. And, and actually, um, those who heard our report from Funding the Future, um, we went through this because some of the decisions, um, looking forward are based on our numbers and, and trends. Whether we're growing, because if you remember K through five, we spoke that we're showing growth there. But at the secondary level, we're not. But of course, the K through five will become secondary students. So, um, are there any questions? There'll be more to come with hard data once we get the, um, the full report, you know, from the state. We just submitted that, um, on, on Bed's Day.
I just have a question. I've noted five oh four is an IEP. What's an LEP? Can you refresh my memory? Or, I'm not sure if I've heard of it.
LEP.
Thank you, Ryan.
That's the new one.
Yes.
That's new. Limited English Proficiency.
So that's never been pulled out before or kept track of? Or have I just never noticed it before?
No, I think.
Nothing matters. I just looked at it. I was like, I heard of five oh four IEP.
Correct me if I'm wrong, that's, they just changed the name. It was, um, ELL, you know, English Language Learners, and, and they just changed the name. Yeah, that's why even, even for me, I'm like, I know, I should know this, but they just changed the name.
Yeah, as soon as you make an ac, a list of acronyms, you end up with new ones.
How long have they been doing that as a statistic? I don't remember ever doing that when I taught.
English Language Learners as, oh, I, I don't know. As long as I've been in this career, they've always.
Ours was all based on ethnicities. It didn't have a statistic like that.
Twenty-four years I've been doing this, I've always broke out English Language Learners, and that's been twenty-four years.
Boy.
Yeah, we've always had that, yeah.
The English Language.
Okay, um, let me go into next. So, so next, and, and I have to, uh, thank Matt because, uh, with the report regents and graduation data, Joe put together all, all the data, the numbers, the percentages. And Matt was nice enough to, uh, to put those into a chart. So I thank you for that because that, really for, we, we were looking through it this morning, um, in cabinet. And it does sometimes, some people see things differently, and that does make things progress.
Well, I just, you know, I was just doing that for my benefit and, and kind of just shared it with Joe. But, um, when I, when I look at a table, you know, I can't see a whole lot from it. But, you know, when I, when I can visually see.
Put it in a graph.
Kind of what's going on, you know, it helps me understand what, what it looks like. So happy to do it. I, you know, had it already done, so.
We started at the beginning of a trend. Because I, I, I learn better that way too. I, I can understand it better, so. Okay, so looking at the numbers, so you, you, the first page, um, you have the numbers. I mean, something to point out here is, uh, is chemistry. Chemistry, so the first thing I'll say, th- this cohort of students are, are the students where, um, there were some, um, changes in the, um, in the curriculum and what was being taught. And we anticipated going down in that area. So that, if you see the arrow moving down, that means we went down to seventy-nine percent. Last year, years past, we're typically in the upper eighties. That's, that's the one, I know when I spoke with Joe this morning, that was the one I want to make sure we highlight. Are there any, yes, Matt?
And that's kind of one of the things that helped me with the graphs, look at what was going on.
You can.
Because you can see that just straight percentage going down. But if you look at where those students fall and kind of what's going on, there's a significant increase in the number of students that are in there.
Right.
And the number of students that were increased to that cohort all fell in that fifty-six to, um, eighty-five range for the most part.
Right.
So, you know, so that's what helped me understand, well, was it the same, you know, same number of students? Just a, a different percentage or?
Yup.
So is that, is that a performance issue? Is it a, an issue with who is recommended to take that course? Because has that been changing, that kind of thing? So those questions came to my mind looking at, at some of the additional stuff.
Those are great questions because I ask myself the same exact questions. And I think, I think the answer is all the above. I think we have to look at all those things. I think that, you know, we've changed things since, since this cohort. And we hope that the changes that we, that we put in place will show, will show improvement again, back to where we typically perform. But again, we have, we have, it's a, you have to wait and see. There's no other way to do that. We have to see how, um, how kids perform.
Right.
The other thing is, you know, and I remember, you know, I publicly said, you know, well, the teachers, you know. Well, you know what? You can't, you can't do that either. Um, because teachers did what they were directed to do, okay? So if you're, if you're, I'm, I'm such a big person on, on, at the middle level, building the foundation. And if you're not building that foundation, I'm losing my, I'm sorry, guys. If you're not building that foundation, it's going to be, um, it's going to be difficult. But you can't blame them. They did what they were supposed to do or what they were directed to do. So that, we'll see how the kids perform next year, the year after. And again, you know, like I said, and, and I, you know, I don't mean to single Renee out, you know, Renee, both Renee and Tony are doing a real good job, you know. We have the teachers. The teachers are helping us drive this. It's not Matt McDonald saying to them, this is what we need to do. Because I don't have the answers. The practitioners, the, the, the ones in the classroom, they know, so we're kind of following. And you know what? Maybe there'll be mistakes along the way, but that's okay. But something has to change clearly because the data shows it, right? And, and we're talking about just chemistry right now.
Yeah, and that, like, that was one of the driving kind of things in terms of me trying to understand this too. You've got a hundred and forty-two more students taking the course this year than took the previous year.
Right.
You know, so is this a bubble? Is that, is that, that's the thing is.
That's right.
Would these students have taken this in the past?
They would have taken them in the past, but they would have taken them a year later.
Well, that, that doesn't show true in terms of the number of students in the class. Well, well, if there's half the number of students enrolled next year. Because you've got a bubble, they, so.
Well, we have a bubble because we pushed them all.
Right, that, isn't that what you're saying?
We pushed them all into this class, into this course.
Okay, but the, the number of students in chemistry the previous year was a hundred and forty-two fewer.
Right.
Where, where is?
So if you look.
But what Kim's saying is, is that, so it's a hundred and forty-two more?
That may be because.
Oh, here it is, right, yeah.
That may be because there was that one year in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, they had, they made all tenth graders take chemistry, whether they're accelerated or not, which means that next year, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, would have many less students taking chemistry because everyone took it. So that's why you're seeing a big bump in numbers in the twenty eighteen, nineteen school year for chemistry. That was the only year that Balden'sville did that, and that was due to the previous administration.
Right, well, it would have been last year. So you said they made them take chemistry?
Right.
That would have happened last year.
No, in twenty sixteen, seventeen, with Dr. Hamilton, the decision he made was that all tenth graders were going to take chemistry in the twenty sixteen, seventeen. So because of that, it, it was not just accelerated, it was everyone. So the next year, twenty seventeen, eighteen, you'd expect much fewer students taking it. And that's why you're seeing a big bump, unless a class size.
Class size was smaller that year.
Okay, so that's for the bump. And one thing I do want to say is, um, I went back to like two thousand nine, two thousand ten just to kind of see like trends in the chemistry. And we've done pretty consistent, um, outside of oh nine, ten, but eighty-eight, ninety-two, ninety-two, ninety, eighty-nine for our passing rate. But in twenty sixteen, seventeen, we did go down to eighty-two percent, which, you know, it's not huge. But I mean, it is seven percent difference in passing from the previous year. And I think what we probably learned from that was there are kids who shouldn't be in the class if they're not ready, and that being the year that they're all forced to take it, whether they were ready or not. And I heard it at graduation parties after that regent's, it was horrible.
Ma, I'm sorry, can you, can you tell me what numbers you're looking at when you're talking about the hundred and forty some?
Yeah, so, and, um, I'm looking at the difference in number of students there. I don't know what line on the table it was.
Was it on the original graph? On, on the, on the, the top? I'm sorry, the first page or this, well, actually, it's chemistry's on the second page. Where it says chemistry total tenth grade, two forty-seven, eleventh grade, ninety-two, and twelfth, six?
I'm looking, I'm looking at, at this in terms of the number of students, the difference in the number of students in each category between eighteen and nineteen that I pulled out here. And if you, if you look at this, the red line is the number of students in nineteen and the number of students in eighteen.
So you're presenting data that's not here, that the, the raw data is not here.
The data came from those tables.
I'm missing something.
Right. Yeah, this just breaks it out by numbers there.
I just. I said it because that's a hundred and forty. I just know that. Whether they were ready or not, so I didn't have the numbers. I just knew that that's the answer to that.
That's the year before we've gotten this information. So that's why that eighteen.
Can I, can I see that? Because I don't, I don't see that.
I have the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen tables that Joe gave us in, at the July meeting.
Probably a year.
Yeah, and there's one hundred and eighty-eight students who took chemistry that year as compared to this year, what was it, three hundred and something? Yeah, three hundred and forty-three. Unless there was a mistake in the, when the tables were put together from Joe.
So would we not have had, so I realize they took it a year earlier, but would we not have had that many students taking chemistry? Is that an anomaly that we don't, we wouldn't usually have that many kids taking chemistry?
No.
Well, so, and that's what, that's why I was kind of just trying to figure out, you know, what other factors are there.
Yeah, so it, it, you know, one could conclude that we made this course more available to more students. Um, and that's why, so now you have more students at varying levels of ability. And so that's why the graph looks like it does, right? And so do we, do we do any analysis or thinking about? You know, it's not a bad thing to make a course more available to students, but what did we do to help the, these students succeed who wouldn't normally take a course like that?
We didn't. And, and that's the biggest problem here is that we didn't do the things that we should have done. First of all, I think everybody's recognized, um, that the decisions that were made five years ago to make a switch in a curriculum with a three-month planning period without a lot of teacher involvement created huge issues. Um, if you talk to science teachers now, they will tell you consistently the vast majority of students shouldn't be taking chemistry in tenth grade. And, and, um, you know, my daughter's teacher, my friend's teachers, a, a lot of kids shouldn't have been doing this. And I also think that because our teachers are teaching to the regents in this case, it's a, I mean, the first class, the, the parent teacher, I'm sorry, the open house that we had, the teacher that my daughter had spent the entire time telling us why they were not going to do well on the regents. Because they were prepar, and realistically, because of the curve. And I think that they did not slow down knowing that they didn't get that physical science foundation when they were in seventh and eighth grade. And, you know, I have a huge issue with this because we took a cohort of students and we set a lot of them up to fail. Not because of the acceleration piece of it, as because we didn't figure out a way to give them the physical sciences that they needed to be able to succeed at the later grades. And I don't think that, given the intensity of that class, that the teachers were well-prepared to be able to get those kids to where they needed to be. They needed to cover curriculum. They didn't have time to be able to do some of those other things. Now, what Chris is talking about in terms of, you know, whether you're going to call it MTSS or RTI, that type of model, if, if that had been in place for these kids, if we could have identified them very quickly, you know, and not just thinking of RTI for English or for math, but to think about it for sciences as well, we, we might have done a better, I think the kids might have performed better here. It's just, it's a shame because I think that, you know, most of these kids that didn't do well, you know, that said, okay, I passed with a sixty-six, or I passed with a sixty-seven, okay, I got by the skin of my teeth. You know, it, it's almost as if we should have been thinking about what else do we need to do to reengage these kids now that they've taken chemistry? And, and how do we encourage them to, to continue in the sciences? Because I would guess if, if Joe was here, if you would look, how many kids typically would have gone into physics that are saying, I'm not, I'm not going to take another regents-level course because chemistry was such a disaster? And, and again, I have a perspective, um, from my own child and from the kids that I know in this area, in this grade level. You're, you're shaking your head, so.
I was one of those kids. I loved science, and then I almost failed my regents, and I was discouraged. I haven't taken science for the past two years, so, and it's happened to my friends too.
I think looking at some of yours, just the chemistry alone, but there's other ones that we can look at. I think that we can learn a lot from this data, especially as a science department is rolling out the new curriculum, how they intend on doing it, and how important it is not to skip any material. In eighty, in sixteen, seventeen, that was, that, that was just like a different year because that was just something that the previous administration decided to do. A lot of those kids had the physical science. It wasn't an issue. It wasn't a matter of them missing the material. They just weren't ready for the material in tenth grade, a lot of those kids. If you go to seventeen, eighteen school year, all that's when we made the switch and physical science now is being taught in seventh grade. Well, the results were much better. We had ninety-three percent of the kids pass, thirty-one percent hit mastery, which was a big improvement from our twenty-three percent that hit mastery. But then you go to the eighteen, nineteen school year, that was the cohort of students that never got the physical science in, in eighth grade or seventh grade, in the middle level standards. And what we got was only a seventy-nine percent pass rate, and our mastery rate went down to seventeen percent. I just think, I'm seeing the pattern when things are left out. Now, if you go to the living environment, it's, you know, completely different. The sixteen, seventeen cohort of students, they were the ones that got the life science two years in a row essentially. That Whit Hamilton, previous administration took everything out except for what the students needed to get that regions, that science regions exam. But our numbers, now what they did is flip-flop that. So instead of not having the physical science, these kids are now not getting the life science, and our numbers have gone down. We went from fifty-six percent mastery rate down to a thirty-nine percent mastery rate when we took out the life science, we took out a whole course. But we did bump up to forty-one percent, but if you guys want that to be the new norm, then we leave it as it is. But if we want to go back to what we used to get of sixty-five, seventy-one percent mastery level, then we need to insert that life science stuff back into the curriculum. I mean, we're basically, I mean, living environment is an incredibly expansive vocabulary, and these kids are missing all of that vocabulary, all of that foundational material prior to taking the course. So we're, and we're putting kids into that position as their first science regions as well. I'm just not sure how, I just think that, you know, we really need to take a look at.
Life sciences of, you're saying at the middle level, life science.
They don't teach it anymore.
A full-year course.
Yeah, it's a full-year course.
You're saying needs a full-year course at the middle level.
Right.
As opposed to or in addition to?
Well, I mean, what we did was.
I just, I just, because I gotta write discounts.
Under previous administration, they took out the physical science piece, and we see what the results are. What we did when we redid it with Bosie's, we took, we put the physical science back in, but we took the life science out, so we just did a swafferoo, and we're seeing the negative results at the high school level with what we're lacking at the middle level.
Right.
You know, and.
Yeah, no, this, this is good conversation because Renee, oh, Renee's still here. You know, Renee meets with these departments, and this will be good because I'm trying to insert myself into those, um, into those meetings, the acceleration, and, and, um, these are the conversations that I can bring back and talk to them about, um, meaning the teachers.
And obviously with the math, I mean, it's hard to go back, you can't really go back very far because once we changed to the common core assessments, I mean, you, everything prior to that, you really couldn't do any comparisons anymore. The sixteen, what is it? Let me get my notes here. Kim, your daughter's in what grade? She's in eleventh grade right now? She's junior. So in sixth, she was in eighth grade in fifteen, sixteen?
That's a lot of math, that's a lot of math for me to do.
Hold on, where are my notes?
Pull out some.
Here, there.
So the sixteen, seventeen results for algebra, that was the cohort of students that got the same material twice under the previous administration in seventh grade. They took out all the geometry, all the statistics.
I missed that, what is it, the math?
Oh, for math.
No, no, what course were you just talking about?
Oh, I ju, I moved over to algebra, I'm sorry.
No, that, no, that's what I'm trying to figure out. Yeah, no, okay, I got you.
So I guess it's just going to take a while to unravel what was done and figure out how to fix this stuff. For algebra, the twenty sixteen, seventeen regents results, that was the cohort of students that got all the probability and statistics taken out, all the geometry taken out in seventh grade. And they just focused on the algebra stuff, and those kids ended up doing very well. They had a thirty-four percent mastery rate and a ninety-two percent pass rate, which is saying, if you take your time on it, you're going to get, and lay that foundation, you're going to get really good results. I could go on if you want.
Let me say something because I taught that at Ray, and the kids that were in Excel program were going to be taking earth science in eighth grade. So at seventh grade, with those students, we were expected to get in a, a third of a year of biology, a third of a year of chemistry, and a third of a year of physics, and there's no way you could do it. You could not cover all of that, and physics really suffered, um, along the way. You just couldn't, you couldn't get it all done. So if you want to give them the kind of background they need going into biology and chemistry and physics, you have to find a way to provide that prior to eighth grade. And it's not easy to do, because we did biology very thorough, right up, you know, everything except the human body because health covered that, and then we did chemistry right up through writing double replacement equations, and then physics, you had like three weeks to try to cover physics at the end. It was, it was crazy. But apparently, you know, it helped the kids, especially with the biology and the chemistry. With that background lacking, I, I think it is a real struggle, especially in biology where a huge part of the course is vocabulary. They don't, they don't, they don't get that at all, and, uh, it's, it's quite challenging for them.
I'm of, I agree. I'm a firm believer in building that foundation. I think that, you know, you build the confidence along, along with that goes confidence, and, and every kid's different, you know, that, they reach their potential or, or that aha moment at different times. But again, I, you know, I'll say that publicly, and I'll say that to the department when I meet with them, but, um, I really want them to tell me, and I, and I will tell you as I sit here, if I'm a gambler, if I were a gambler, um, I will tell you that they will believe in the same thing, to build the foundation. Going, going back to, not to switch gears, but going back to the discussion we had about Lo. When we spoke about that at the middle level, you know, your Spanish teacher said, you know, many districts, um, Spanish one is over two years, seventh grade, eighth grade. We do it in one. But again, and their arguments kept going back to you're building that foundation and their confidence to go deeper into the course in the later years, to go on to, you know, three, four, and five. So it, I, I believe that's the same thing as it relates to math and science.
So I would say with science, I mean, you have your definite disciplines, your four different science classes, but when you get to math, every year is, you're using those same things in the next class, so you're, if they're not truly getting those foundations, they're not only going to struggle in that class, which we see here, but each successive class as well. But then when you have the cross-discipline, so, you know, you look at this chemistry and physics, especially the chemistry, because less and less kids are taking physics, there is a lot of math, and is that why? Or, you know, or is it both, the fact that they're not getting content and their math skills aren't up there? I don't know, that would have to be sorted out.
So one, so one of the things, and I think, you know, I, I may be naive in saying some of these things, but it's, it's, it's something that I think that we have to think about, is the social and emotional learning for our students. You know, in talking with, um, you know, in talking with a colleague in the College of Medicine and Sciences at Upstate, they're really looking at kids who are coming in less prepared to be in college than they were two years ago or four years ago. And, and doing a lot, and, um, really struggling with how to help these students be successful. And, you know, let's not even talk about just the fact that the way, the lives that our kids lead now with social media and all of these other things that come into play, and then, and we're trying to push them. You know, I remember the, you know, when we, Melissa Chido, you know, took us into a kindergarten class, and we were talking about, you know, being able to play at the kitchen, you know, at the kitchen. And that we don't have time for that anymore because we're pushing these kids and we're pushing these kids. And at what point do we have to say, and, and again, I think, at what point do we say we don't need to push them so hard? We need to give them the foundation, we need to let them spend the time to get that foundation. And that it will ultimately make these kids successful. Now, as a district, people might say, you know what, we don't agree with you, Kim, and we want to do something different. And if that's the case, if we're going to push these kids as hard as we're pushing them in math and science, then we need to figure out a different mechanism to help make these kids successful. We have co-teaching classrooms for English, we have co-teaching classrooms for all of our, uh, social, you know, social studies, everything. We don't have co-teaching classrooms in chemistry, we don't have co-teaching classrooms in math. So it's up to these individual students to have to go and get help on their own, and a lot of these kids aren't willing to do it. And, you, you know, you have to have parents who are pushing these kids, who are pushing the teachers to encourage their kids to do it. So if we're going to do this, and if we're going to accelerate these kids through, we have to put the supports in place. That's exactly what we didn't do for this cohort of kids that got pushed through this, is we didn't have the adequate supports in place. So we've got to look at it as a whole picture. We either slow it down for more kids rather than less, or we slow it down for more kids and accelerate less kids who are prob, that are far more ready, or if we want to push them, then we better figure out how to get additional supports in place to help make these kids successful. Because what we've, what we've done with a lot of these kids, and we have to think about it, is it's the sciences and the math, that's where jobs are going to be. And if you look at, to speak to what you just said, you haven't taken a science in two years. Why? Because we didn't help you be, we didn't help you to be successful. Or we, we put you in a situation where you didn't feel successful. And who knows, if you had continued down that path, physics might have been your thing. You know what I mean? And so we have to make sure that we're doing a better job of that in some way. And it's not just doing it, but figuring out if we're going to do it, making sure that all of those supports are in place.
And it does, not that every kid is going to be going to college, but I do, I do think about that a lot, if they're starting, or they're ending their math early, especially, that's a number of years. I mean, what comes out of your math classes, your reasoning, your critical thinking, your problem-solving skills, and those are the skills that they're looking for in the world, the twenty-first century work skills. And by discouraging kids because they don't think that they can do it because we've pushed them too early, what are we setting them up for? And with that mental health thing that Joan and I went through, the one statistic that stuck out to me was that forty-one percent of our students entering freshmen are not prepared and overwhelmed in college. I mean, that's, that's a pretty high number. You know, I, I have, I know people who I've talked to this summer who are in different committees, different colleges across the state, and one thing that they're saying they're concerned about retention rates for our college freshmen, and they're having conversations, and what can we do? And faculty is actually pushing back hard, saying, we're not lowering our standards, you need to figure out how you're going, knowing you're accepting the right people. I don't want our kids to not be accepted, I want us to prepare them and make sure they have the great foundations and they're ready. The mental health clinics at the collegiate level have boomed too, they're, they're hiring more counselors as well. What are we setting these kids up for? I just want them, whatever way they decide to go, I want them to be prepared. And I agree, Kim, with exactly what you said. We need, if we're going to push so many kids through, we need to make sure we have all the supports there so they can be successful, or we just need to slow it down. And, you know, do they really want to do this? I don't know. But what I don't like to hear is that you've stopped because you didn't feel like you were good at it, and you absolutely could have been if you were given the time to have that foundation to be successful when you go forward. And actually, I was a chemistry teacher, and I'm very sad to hear that you missed on some really, out on some cool stuff.
No, going back to the, the middle school, the lack of the physical science that these students didn't get, that they didn't have, not only probably affected their chemistry, which I'm pretty sure it did, it probably affected their physics too if they did go on to physics because they didn't get that physical science and have that, that background, even though it wasn't taught as extensively in the middle school, it certainly didn't hurt to have it.
I guess what I'd, what I'd like to hear more, and with the discussion tonight, I mean, it's unfortunate what occurred, you know, five years ago with the previous administration, but what I've heard kind of implied is that we have not fixed that yet, and.
That was going to be my question.
And, you know, it sounds like we haven't done anything to fix this since the issues occurred. I don't necessarily believe that's true, but I'd like to hear more of when this occurred, when this has occurred, what have we done? Because I know we've done something versus the implication that we haven't done anything and we need to fix this going forward, but I think there's some areas that, you know, we have done this to fix it, we still have this area, these areas to focus on. And, you know, I'd like to hear more on those kind of areas.
I'll let, well, you know what, why, why don't, Joe, you talk about, you know, some of the things since on the prior administration to where we are today, as far as, you know, talking about we fixing the situation, then I'll, then I'll comment.
Before he starts, can I just say geometry? They're doing really well in geometry. I mean, whatever changes that they made to support that cohort of students that was negatively impacted, they, it looks like based on the results from last year, they continued with those practices, and we got really good results in that math course again. With the algebra two, which is that cohort of students, I'm not sure, I don't know the algebra two curriculum. That was the cohort of students, Joe, that got, um, essentially the algebra course twice. They got it in seventh grade, and then when they actually took it in eighth grade, and I would think that their results would have been better than they were on the algebra two. But maybe it's just because they were pushed so hard, maybe they just, I, I don't know what happened with the algebra two last year. But that is a cohort that got an incredible dose of algebra.
So specifically with the algebra two, historically, we have not been in the nineties with, and I'm just looking at passing rate as, as, as an example right now. Prior to last year, it was at ninety-five percent. So you see a reduction, that it did go down to ninety-two percent. But before that, we were in the eighties consistently in most of the math classes. So, you know, to speak to the algebra two kids, I mean, I do think while they did, that cohort of students did drop three percentage points from the passing perspective, it's still above, if you were to look at a, at a trend over the course of time for that specific exam. Highlighting some of the things that have, have occurred, so the first year after the, the district made a change with the curriculum at the middle school level, we did have an additional course at the time that was added, not a course, but a, a lab component that was put in place to try to help students get some additional, uh, resources. That went on for a year, and then we chose to repurpose that position to, uh, the project lead the way computer science at Ray, and we shifted some additional support at Dirky Junior High School in an effort not to lose staff. Simultaneously, when that happened, we created, or we ma, made sure that the teachers that were writing the curriculum for the middle level math and science ensured that the curriculum had all of the components that were quote-unquote "missing" from the prior curriculum documents. So they, essentially, students would have been provided access to all of the standards at the middle school level before going into eighth grade acceleration, algebra one, and/or living environment, with the exception in living environment, there were some standards where there was, it was permitted to have the, um, co-seeding of, of students with some living environment concepts. So that was changes that were made from prior administration to ensuring that we provided students the curriculum, because I think that highlights the gaps that were missing for the ten, last year's tenth grade cohort of students.
Are we talking about science or math?
Science and math. I mean, it's the same group of students. There were gaps in both. The board received a full report on that, and that was corrected. So the, now eleventh grade students would have been that cohort of students that would have been missing both math and science when they were in seventh grade. So we fixed that. Now.
For them.
For them. And then any student thereafter, the curriculum that those students are getting, whether they're acceleration, accelerated or not, the teachers are instructing them so that all of the content standards are being taught as expected. That was part of the, the, the fix that was identified from the audit.
So in science, in, obviously, we're going through changes now with the sixth grade cohort right now, because we've shifted to the conceptual model.
Correct.
So prior to that, earth science was covered in sixth grade. And then in seventh grade was the physical science. All the life science teachers needed to learn the new material to teach, and they now were teaching the physical science. So for the accelerated students, they were not getting the life science standards, only the non-accelerated students were.
There are some areas in the current standards where there is some overlap for ninth grade stu, or eighth grade students that are accelerated, um, and then the ninth grade students that are in living environment. There, there, essentially, some standards that are being co-sat.
So they're not getting the foundations prior to taking the courses, what we're talking about. I'm not sure when you walked in.
Yeah.
So that's, that's, that's the issue. We're talking about the foundations prior to taking the high school course. And whether they're getting it, not getting it, or there's an overlap, they're, they're not getting it, and our numbers have gone down. And if we want this to be our new norm, then we stay on track and continue doing what we're doing.
It's not. So part of the work that the ex-science acceleration, the acceleration committee is doing, as well as the science. as well as the science transition committee, and then we're also working with the math group. And I believe the curriculum department has highlighted some of that work over the course of time. We're working to ensure that all of the standards that are middle level are being addressed as we shift to that new conceptual model before students hit the eighth grade acceleration or the ninth grade living environment exam, whichever path they're taking. So that is being addressed as we've shifted.
So to get all those standards in, that's why you're doing the double block every other day for the science and the math for the accelerated program.
So that's not finalized yet, but one of the recommendations that we will be making, the, our last conversation that took place last week with that committee, is that we would be looking to add an additional, essentially, every other day period of instruction to math and science for any student who's choosing to take acceleration as a, as a pathway. Because it is, it would essentially give them a year and a half worth of instruction for two years' worth of content. So, you know, one of the complaints that has always been, any student that, you know, goes into acceleration, or teachers that teach acceleration, is trying to make sure that all that content, all that instruction is provided over a one-year period of time. So we're looking to expand that, similar to what we've done with the eighth grade non-regents science course, where we've added the lab component. So the intent is, is if, if a student chooses to pursue acceleration, they meet the criteria of whatever is established by the, and recommended by the committee, that they would be getting additional time to hopefully help with mastering those skills that they would be getting if they're in that accelerated coursework.
And I think that that's absolutely what they would need to get through the course and meet all the standards to have a good foundation. Extending upon that, I guess I worry about the fact that at a period of time, we should be broadening their experiences. We're actually narrowing them and taking away a period or two if they do it in math and science. I, you know, I, I do struggle, I do get what you're saying, because we've talked about this before. When we first talked, when I, before I was on the board, it's much easier to put two years over three than to put two years into one with the acceleration component. And I get that, and I see what you're trying to achieve with that. I just worry about the narrowing of experiences that the students will have by doing that. But that's a, whatever you guys decide to do and whatever the parents decide is best. If they wanna, you know, narrow their exposure instead of broadening it at that age level, I guess they can choose to do that. And as long as other kids, so what I think about with that schedule is, if you have a kid who's not math and science and they no longer play an instrument, what do they have and what are they sitting in? You know, I, I do worry about options for those students, which is why I brought up low in finding some other things, especially for seventh graders, and on top of that, then they have the STEM class. And again, if they're not math and science, they're not accelerated, they're not gonna take the STEM class. And we have kids sitting in study halls for ten weeks, you know, three study halls. You know, I think about the big picture, not just the acceleration, but the impact on the other students who are not accelerated. With the math, Joe, I do have a question though. You said that they're all getting the standards. So the math, I was pulled up the, the program review that you guys did when you laid it out with Bosie's. And in ninth grade, if they're not accelerated, they get all of the algebra standards. If they're in eighth grade and they're accelerated, they're getting all the algebra standards, but they also are covering the eighth grade function standards and the eighth grade probability standards prior to beginning the algebra content?
I honestly don't know off the top of my head, and I thought the intent was to discuss the Regents data. So if you would like an overview with the gaps, if there are gaps, or with specific curriculum, I would say we would need to bring the experts in, who are the classroom teachers, who are teaching those courses on a regular basis, and they can identify if there's any areas that are not being covered. I don't have that off the top of my head. I was prepared tonight-
No, that's, that's fine.
-based on the board discussion to discuss the Regents results.
And that was part of the conversation prior to you getting here. So that was the direction, is going based on input from different people in the room. What was missing, what's not, and why we're getting the Regents results that we were getting in particular years. So it's, it's not to spring it on you, but I had this here, and you just said that all the standards are being met. But I just have a question about that, especially knowing that those cohorts of students are in the same classes together. It looks like they are taking different classes. That's why I was wondering how that would work and whether that impacted our data and whether there was ever test question analysis. Because the eighth grade, if that's actually what's happening, your ninth graders would be getting a review of that eighth grade content, absolutely, because those accelerated kids are getting it for the first time. But in essence, that lessens the amount of time that those non-accelerated kids would have to do the actual algebra class. So that, that's the only reason why I was asking, whether that, this layout changed from when you guys did it, that's all. But it does, it is very applicable to what we're talking about, seeing the air, up arrows and down arrows and what years, and me understanding what was taught and what wasn't during those years, making those connections.
So, and I, and to Jen's point, I think we did start the conversation, so you're coming in bloodstream, so there was a lot of things going on. But, so, I'm, I'm a bit confused. I wanna jump back to this Regents presentation. So, and I guess I didn't realize, so the information that is presented on the first two pages, or the first three pages, I guess, so the graphs, the graphs that start on page four, down through. Can you go through, because I'm trying to understand, are, are you comparing the 2018 data that wasn't there, that is someplace else along with the 2019?
So I, I don't wanna take full credit for those graphs. Actually, full credit should go to Matt, because Matt Jaeger, he's the one that shared those with me. And we thought-
Oh, okay.
We thought it would be helpful to share them with the rest of the board because of the fact that over the last few years, there've been a few questions where some people like to look at the data, you know, as discussed here, with the arrows, and other people are more visual. And so, he on his own created these graphs from the 2018 Regents data and the 2019 Regents data that I provided. So what you see is the comparison.
So the 2018 data that you were using to create these is not within this presentation?
It, no.
Okay, so, so I'm trying to come up with numbers that actually don't exist within this current presentation.
Correct.
It's stuff that was taken before?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, it was, it was taken out of the data from the Friday letter last year.
Right.
Okay.
This pro, this document, as well as this document from the 2018 data.
Okay.
And trying to look-
But I think-
Trying to look at trends over years as opposed to one specific year.
Exactly, right. But I was trying to figure out where the numbers were coming from.
So from my perspective with the graphs itself, the reason we chose to also include them is I, I don't think, I mean, there's a few areas that I think, I think you see consistency. I think, for the most part, I think there are areas that, you know, we have to also remember that you have a different cohort of students who are sitting for these exams. So it's not comparing those same students. You know, you've got a whole totally different cohort of, of kids sitting for the exams. But like if I look at this Algebra I percentage here, you know, that's highlighted in blue, it looks quite different from the graph above it, you know, 2018 to 2019 percentages. But one thing that sticks out here is you gotta remember this, this blue graph here that says this is the high school level students. If a student is taking Algebra I as a high school student, that means they weren't successful at Dirgey. So these are what one might categorize as the most at-risk students. So, and there's very few students that take Algebra I at Baker High School. If you go to page three of this document, it highlights that there were ten students. So one student scoring in any one of those ranges is gonna drastically shift that graph for that year. So, you know, that's just, I, I, when I looked at this, I wasn't completely alarmed by a lot of the data other than the exception, which we've talked about before, and I think you've already highlighted prior to me getting here, was the chemistry. There was a significant decrease in chemistry that has not been historical in last year's cohort of students.
That, that, it appears, you know, when you look at Earth Science two going back a year, the 2018 underperformed the 2019, which would be that cohort going through Earth Science before they went through chemistry.
Yep.
So I saw, I saw that as well.
I'm sorry, can you repeat what you just said? Was it, I wanna look at what I have here.
So if you, if you look at, if you compare the 2018-
Okay.
Earth Science- tra, uh, numbers to the 2019 Earth Science numbers?
The 2018 and 2019?
Right.
Okay.
There were more, there were more students taking Earth Science in 2018 than in 2019. But you also saw the, the performance levels. There's, there's a, there's a di- larger difference there in terms of performance level of the students in Earth Science.
Isn't that the year when they got the two, they got the two years of physical science?
No, that's, that's the chemistry one, that's the chemistry from last year when they took Earth Science the year before.
It's interesting because that year-
If you're looking at eighteen Earth Science and nineteen Chemistry, that's that same cohort.
No, because they would've taken Earth Science.
In 2018, if they took Chemistry in 2019.
Yep.
So between seven, the 2018 and 2019, it looks like our pass rate went down last year, but our mastery rate actually went up.
Well, I'm looking, I'm looking more at the gra, I, you know, looking at one specific percentage number doesn't tell me a lot about the story.
Right, so in 2018, their performance was, I'll say, lower. I mean, we have more kids that are successful in 2019 than we did in 2018.
That's what I saw looking at the trends of the, of the Dirgey in, in particular.
Right.
Right.
Right, that's why I like the, the numbers instead of the percentages.
The Dirgey students are the accelerated students in-
In Earth Science.
In Earth Science. So you see an increase there, where you'd see a, obviously, in 2018, yeah, there were a lot more students at Baker in that eighteen, nineteen category there, taking the exam.
No, because they would've been the, those are the accelerated students in 2018 at Dirgey.
Right.
Right.
But in 2019, we had more students at Baker High School. There were fewer students in two thousand, sorry. There were fewer students in 2019 taking Earth Science at Baker High School because there was a larger cohort of students taking in 2018 at both Baker High School and at Dirgey. If you remember, we had a year where there was essentially-
There was no one who took Earth Science pretty much. That was, um-
A lot of students taking Earth Science.
Twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen year. And then the year prior to that, it was just the accelerated students who took Earth Science.
So and then, you know, the other thing that jumped out is, you know, obviously, what we knew, the, the students who took courses earlier, the students who were accelerated significantly outperformed students who waited. You know, if you look at, if you look at those kinda curves, you know, students, students who took Algebra in eighth grade outperformed the ninth graders, that outperformed the tenth graders. I mean, you look at those curves and, and you see that jump out too.
I see that too. I think I've, you know, discussed this before. I think the thing that makes me the most nervous when we're talking about the foundations earlier in this conversation, how important they are, it's, it's very difficult to look at the results. And knowing, for example, between an eighty and an eighty-five, it looks like there's a difference in understanding of five percent. But with that curve, it's really almost one-fifth of the course content difference. Let's say you got an eighty and you got an eighty-five, you think you only know a difference of five percent, but you would actually understand twenty percent more of the content than Matt would because of that curve. And that's what worries me going forward with the students, if they're not truly grasping it in the states, just playing games because everyone needs to pass the Algebra Regents. It's, now we're talking about difficulties going forward in our math classes. Then we're talking about difficulties going to our chemistry and physics. And this is how we can get college students who aren't ready when they get there. That's what concerns me. We can live in like this dreamland and say, "We're doing great because New York State says we're doing great." Or we can actually look at this stuff and figure out here in Boston, New York, how we're going to get our kids farther. And what's the best way to do that, to make sure, as Matt says, they have the foundations? Because that's what makes them successful. Think about the reading program, foundations, fundamentals, foundations, what they need to be successful in all their classes. It's, it's no different in math and science.
So can I, so let's, if you look at page ten, and you look at English and US History and Global, those graphs, I mean, there is a huge increase, or there's, there, the students that are performing at a higher level, it looks completely different. So take out acceleration, take out all of those things. What do we need to do in our math and science programs, and I get that they're complicated, to be able to have the types of graphs that we see here? What's the difference? And why do we have more of these kids that are successful in these programs and on those regions versus what we're seeing in our maths and sciences? Why is our mastery level less?
Well, I think, number one, you're, 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 you're talking about two different types of content and instruction, which I think has a huge impact. The exams are different. I think what we've tried to do over the course of time is create more problem-based and project-based instruction with that investigative approach, that inquiry approach. We started with integrating Project Lead the Way launch in the elementary year. So hopefully, we're gonna start to see students perform at higher levels. My hope is that the blip that we had with the current tenth grade cohort won't be there because of the work that we've been doing in the STEM interdisciplinary approach. Because there are skills that are transferable. I think, you know, part of the work of what the acceleration committee is looking at and just the science transition and the math teachers in general with adding a laboratory component to give students time in that application of the work. It's a lot more complicated to try to fit that work over the course of a forty-minute period as it would be with an eighty-minute block, which could very well be the case if we add that at the middle school level. I mean, those are some things that stick out based on your question. The other piece to highlight global, I mean, you do see an upward trend, but we are also in the process of transitioning to a, a new exam. And the exam that students are taking currently, or were taking through that trend, was not the historical global history exam that people were used to. It was a transition exam. Traditionally, our global numbers don't look like that, but they've worked very hard. And I think some of the things that the building leadership teams are doing, specifically at Dirgey and at Baker, is they're looking at the data, data that's pulled from the Regents exams. Somebody highlighted looking at questions in those core areas that students are struggling. I think they're trying to provide a consistent approach. There's a lot more collaboration. With all that comes better instruction.
Actually, I think that's a really good question, because that was actually, once we were done with the math and science, I did wanna address the English and the history. Because when you look at the math and science, we're very close to, or the years that we've had those bloopers with those weird things happening, we're pretty close to what they're doing in the region. But I have to say, our English and our history department, they're absolutely killing it compared to the region. Absolutely killing it. Examples, sixty-four versus fifty-five, ninety-four versus eighty-eight for, you know, passing and mastery. And I think about those departments and the opportunities, why are they doing well? Yeah, I agree, Joe, it is a different way of thinking, but what are our students being provided in those courses that they're not being provided in our math and science? And I asked Joe after, I don't remember what meeting it was, what's the difference between our Regents level courses and our honors level courses in English? And he said, "In history, there, it really isn't. They're taking, they're preparing for the AP Global Exam." Deeper writing, more critical reading, those types of skills. Is that the reason why we're crushing it compared to the region? We have so many kids going in that direction. That's just another example of- We have so many kids going in that direction. That's just another example of having like an honors program, the ability to go deeper, get a better understanding. And we're seeing those results that we are on the Regents exam. We don't have an honors program for our math and science. They are not getting a chance to go deeper and get a true understanding of the content. It's just a quick boom, done. Is that the reason why we are crushing it compared to the region in those areas, but not in math and science? I don't know cuz I don't know what the other school districts do and what they provide. Just a thought.
I think it comes down to making sure that, um. As a board, we have, you know, you guys are the content experts, you're the curriculum experts. But when we see areas where we aren't performing to the level that we want to perform. And I think that there's a lot of people that would say in some of these sciences, we're not where we wanna be. Um, we don't wanna be, you know, well be- well below the mastery rate for the region. What is it that, you know, it's not just redesigning of the curriculum and, I mean, we don't have an endless supply of money. But what is it, you know, okay, there's time that you have to put into classroom education, and if you're talking about blocks and some of those things. But let's talk about the other things that we might need to consider doing. And again, I'll just, you know, the idea that I love that Chris threw out is. You know, what other supports do we need to consider at Baker or at Dirgy for kids that are struggling? That we can catch them early. And if it's in, you know, not just, you know, at the elementary level, we've always looked at, you know, reading and math. And maybe it's when we hit Bay, or when we hit Ray, or we hit Dirgy, that we need to be thinking, okay. We need to think about math and science, um, because maybe we've done a great job early on to get these kids where they need to be. For English and some of those other things. But again, what do we as a board need to do to make sure that? When you're doing all of these things, are there additional resources that we need so that more kids can be successful, um, in these classes? Regardless of how you decide to design them.
I think Matt has already started with the math. I mean, pretty much soon as you got this job, you saw that gaps needed to be filled in with the math. And there need to be more supports at the elementary level. And that's really where it starts and you kinda work your way up. So now, we're doing a great job. We're getting RTI teachers at the elementary level. Now, let's move to the next building and figure out what we need. I mean, with the global and English, I mean, I think it'd be interesting to pull out those. I'm not asking you to do it, but it would be interesting to see, you know, the difference in performance between those who take the honors. More rigorous, deeper, critical thinking, reading, writing, analytical pieces as compared to those who don't have the opportunity. And compare those Regents scores as well, you know, and maybe we're onto something, you know, the deeper learning. The better foundation, we're getting better results. And maybe we need to have that attitude across the board in all of our, um, course content.
I, I agree, um, and that's why we have Danielle. You know, hon- honestly, I, you know, I. To look at those things, right, to help us drive decisions. Um, I mean, these are, these are great conversations. And I think, you know, everybody knows what Matt McDonald stands as far as foundation, you know, going back to, um, you know, reading and writing at the elementary level, right? We, we have put a lot of, um, things in place to improve that. And, you know, it's, it'll take time to see if, if those efforts. Have, um, have shown, you know, growth, cuz we gotta wait for the kids to get to that next level, you know, like, like you said, you know, at the secondary level. Continuing, I think, uh, going back to Chris, you know, Chris said, I mean, I, I love the idea, you know, at, um, RTI, at, at the high school. And I mean, what a genius idea. Um, but ti- you know, the time will tell, you know, over the next. Probably three years, I would say three, by the time the ki- the kids at the elementary level get to Ray and, and so on. But again, you know, I'm an impatient person, you know, you know, you just wanna try and put all the pieces together, but those are very expensive pieces, you know, like when you talk about hiring. But I'm a big proponent, I think everybody knows that, you have to have a foundation. You have to. And it goes back to, um. You know, maybe, maybe a kid will never like science, you know, they may excel in science and math and science, but that's just not their interest. But they may do real well. But maybe there's kids also, like, like you described, you know, that breaks my heart hearing that. That kids get turned away because, um, cuz of the, I'm gonna say, because the foundation wasn't there. So if you build that foundation, maybe that interest, or that lack of interest, I should say, becomes an interest. Because you strengthen that foundation. Uh, and I firmly believe that, you know, and. But again, I'm, I'm one person, I'm, I'm one voice and, um, you know, you ha- you have to just bring the, the practitioners, you know, the experts in the room and say, guys. You know, is, are, are we on the same page? You know, the, I'm a firm believer in that and I'm also a firm believer in, um, in, you know, letting kids challenge themselves. You know, every child deserves an opportunity, you know, and that's a, that's a student or family decision. And I think that would look different if we strengthen the foundation in all areas. And I'm not just saying, you know, in math and science, in everything. But again, it all, it all comes together. You build, they all build on each other.
That goes to what Kim said, you know, you're talking about the foundations, but you're also saying that you want every kid to have an opportunity and challenge themselves if they want to. And especially if we're not gonna have a minimum for kids, uh, just the acceleration to stay in, you know, having supports in place to make sure. That they, we don't lose them and we have students walking away instead of thinking, you know, what is, you know. They're thinking about what possibly could've been. I mean, I'll never forget being in this room, first meeting I ever went to, living in Boltonsville. When, um, the previous administration was explaining what he was doing and he flashed up that picture on the screen of the rocket. We don't want kids like this. We want them to be like this. And there's that rocket. And I'm sitting there as a former chemistry teacher thinking, oh my gosh. How in the world do you expect them to get to that if you're stripping away the foundations? Because when those kids don't have those skills when they get to the upper levels. I saw kids struggle and it wasn't fun for them. And you want learning to be fun. You wanna pique their curiosity and give them these opportunities. You don't wanna turn them off.
Well, I think one of the things that's difficult about looking at these data is that we've recently put, you know, with, uh, science in particular. We've recently put some pretty major changes in place that teaches, teachers are, um, relooking at their teaching methods. They're, you know, educating themselves. And so, um, I, you know, I'm really looking forward to, you know, what does that do? To the, you know, um, to the scores. And I think we have to, we have to support teachers and let that. You know, let that happen because I think, uh, uh, the experts feel really convinced that that is gonna change. The ballgame for students. And I think we sat through, uh, an extensive retreat on that. And I think we all agreed that it's a completely different way of, um, teaching science. Certainly, you know, I'm not an expert. I appreciated having the, appreciated being, uh, educated and it seems like it's going to work. And I think we have to support, you know, what the experts are telling us. They wanna try. So we've talked a lot tonight about what didn't happen. And I do feel badly that that didn't happen for students. But I do think there's, there are some things happening now that are trying to turn that around. And so I don't wanna leave us with the impression that, oh my gosh, this is a disaster. We haven't done anything. We've, you know, that, we sat through a pretty extensive retreat, um, um, that we all thought was. An excellent way to approach it.
I couldn't agree with you more. You know, um, we have made a lot of changes. And I think, you know, even from, I'll speak again for me is that it will take time. You know, um, as far as, and, and maybe, maybe it's, nothing's perfect in life. Maybe we're gonna have to make changes. I will, I will say that because. But they, the practitioners know what they need to do. And I think at this point, you know, what I become is rather than, you know, at every meeting, breathing down the throat, I become the cheerleader. Ra ra ra, trying, you know, to, to show the support, to keep going. Um, because I, I, I think they, you're right. They are onto something, but I, it's, we have to give it a little bit of time to see if it's gonna work.
Well, I think that.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Well, to that point, I mean, this, the state has come out and said, you have to change. So the teachers are now in the process of doing that. And I think that, um, you know, yes, and to Christie and, and if you've, um, if for some reason you feel as though. I've spent my time saying what we did poorly, um, I apologize for that because I think the key is that there are some, there are areas that we clearly fell down. Um, now we need to focus on where do we, where do we help and how do we, and how do we do that? And even, and I think it's even more important that as the teachers are trying to transition from, you know, a method that they've used. For many years to what, spending five years to get ready for, is it twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-one? When they have to get ready to this whole new science testing, it's even more important that we're talking about what resources they're gonna need to be able to be successful. Not only for the teachers, but also for our students.
Yeah, um, that, that is a difference cuz there's two things going on, Chrissy. The first thing is what you talked about was the training. And that is required by the state's new standards. It's a new way of doing it. But we also have what they're doing as a conceptual model. So you have teachers dealing with not only a new way of teaching, but you have teachers at the middle level who may not have ever taught the earth science content. That now need to because they're getting a little bit of all those core areas in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So there is a lot going on. And the teachers are definitely gonna need a lot of support, um, going forward.
Add that, that is support that we are building in. We are planning for professional development. We're working with OC and BOCES. We're working with specialists. We're working with our learning coach, coaches. Um, there are areas. If there's a teacher that doesn't feel comfortable, when this is all said and done, if a teacher doesn't feel comfortable teaching a content area that they're expected to teach. Then quite honestly, shame on them because we'll have provided them with so many opportunities and options to get that content. It's, you know, it's okay to say you don't know something and, and meet with, um, you know, uh, what we have in place. To get that instruction. Um, and I think, you know, it's being okay with that discomfort, which they're struggling with right now. But we're ahead of the game in comparison to what other schools are doing, um, specifically in those areas.
Yeah, they've been, they've been teaching, so they haven't taught that content. I mean, they do need to go and, you know, learn different methods and strategies to teach the new material. Absolutely. I guess the, you know, I just wanna say, Kim, what you said is absolutely right. We can't, we're looking at ways to, to fix where we have fallen. But you can't fix where you've fallen if you don't identify that you've fallen. I think that's what this conversation has been about tonight. It's not saying Boltons was horrible. There's just some things that have happened and there's been kind of like a domino effect here and we're just trying to get it corrected. That's all. And you can't do that unless you start looking down at this level, seeing what's going on in patterns and trends.
So I just wanna, um, comment. So I am a current science teacher. So I am in the thick of all of this new, um, the change. And I'm very happy to hear that, um, we're providing that support to the teachers because it's true. I mean, there's some teachers that have taught life science their entire career and now all of a sudden they have to teach earth science or, you know, chemistry, um, standard. So this is a whole new approach to teaching science, um, for teachers. And I think for our students, the way that they're gonna have to learn science. So, um, going with what you were saying, Kim. You know, we do need to provide supports for students when they're in the high school. But I think in the middle level, laying that foundation is extremely important. And my question is, I know you were talking about that support. Of doing like the blocks. So what, is that just for acceleration that you're thinking of doing that?
So right now, I mean, obviously there's cost to everything. Um, the proposal would be minimally for. The, uh, students that were looking to go into acceleration in seventh grade in math and earth science. Um, that's not to say, cuz five years ago, when we added the additional support at, at, um, Ray. Every kid, no matter, um, whether they were accelerated or not, did receive additional period of math instruction. If it could fit into their schedule. Um, that is something that we could look at, is additional support. Um, but that would be a conversation that the math teachers, the, the, um, building as a whole would have to have a conversation, the science teachers. Um, I think the other thing to take into consideration too is what was already mentioned, you know, as far as op- options and opportunities for, for students. Some may not want to be forced into taking, if they're a, a non-accelerated student, they may not wanna be forced into another math class. Because they wanna take something else instead. I mean, those are conversations that we have to have, um, with staff and students. And gather interest. But it's not off the table that we wouldn't have the ability, um, with additional staff to possibly make that happen. And we are doing that right now in eighth grade. It's not required for eighth grade students to have a science lab, but they do because we feel that it's important. At least those students that are not in the accelerated.
I think adding that was definitely beneficial, seeing the direction that we were doing with the next generation, the science standards. I'm not sure if that was the reason why you guys were looking that far ahead. I'm not sure if I even knew until that point that the standards were going through a change in science. Um, it definitely helped when, you know, adding that lab component for scheduling, if kids wanted to move within acceleration and out of acceleration. That's for scheduling purposes, definitely, um, a good reason to have that extra lab period. But I think the direction that we're going and the whole ed engineering component. Um, more time's definitely going to be needed to cover all of the standards. And it ended up working out in our district's favor, I think, by adding that in the eighth grade for sure.
Ask, ask it again if I, if I didn't answer it, I guess.
So, I, I know we're talking about Regents data, but you brought up the fact that, so if somebody's going to take acceleration for science.
Yep.
So now they're gonna take, so in sixth grade.
The proposal would be from the acceleration committee, that there would be a period and a half every other day.
In seventh grade?
In seventh grade.
Okay. So then in sixth grade, what, what concepts are they covering?
They're covering the same concepts that they would be covering with, like six, sixth grade.
Sixth grade.
Science standards, right. We're not, because essentially, when you think about acceleration as a whole, one of the things that everyone's been firm. From teaching staff to administration to, you know, you don't want students making a decision about going into an accelerated track. At the end of their fifth grade year when they're transitioning into sixth grade. So we're, I mean, who knows? That could very well change depending on funding the future, configurations, all that. But right now, we're locked into. It's not in the best interest of students to make a decision about that early about whether they're on an accelerated pathway, um, in math or science. Um, so the decision has to be at the end of sixth grade. And therefore, that's why we're saying two years of instruction in a year and a half with a lab component.
Right. So then in seventh grade, if they're in acceleration, they're having the block and a half.
Right, every other day. Yep.
To cover the standards that.
And also to provide an opportunity for more lab explo- you can't, e- especially in the sciences, to try to get through a lab in a forty-minute period. It's difficult, um, especially given the depth of, you know, what you have to go through with these, with these new standards. Um, so they will have the lab. That's the intent, yep. And I, just one more point, cuz I, I think, you know, again, to not, to focus on some positive. I really do believe that the Project Lead the Way, which we've been doing since we first implemented full-day kindergarten. Um, the whole project, um, math, science, technology, integration, engineering, we have students that have been working through that. Even before we decided to go with the New York State change with the, uh, science learning standards, we were doing that. So our, our teachers have had, um, um, better instruction in the areas of math and science. Specifically around that area in grades K through five. Um, now adding the sci- the, um, Smithsonian units of study. That's just helping to enhance what we're doing. So I, I feel like, you know, even though there's significant shifts occurring at the middle level. And eventually at the high school level, the teachers have already been doing that K through five. And so it will, it may be a struggle for teachers at the middle level because they don't have an expertise in chemistry. Or an expertise in earth science cuz their focus was living environment. But the students will have, I think, a better foundation because of the integrated approach. Which they've had since they were in kindergarten. Um, and I would also add that, you know, we, we're anticipating there being some. Some, uh, retirements specifically at, at the junior high school, um, in the areas of science and, and, and other areas across the district. And so there's nothing, like we did before, there's nothing that says that, you know, if there's somebody who is, you know, just, their passion is. Life science and it's, it's living environment, it's biology, and they're currently teaching at Ray Middle School and, um. You know, seventh grade, and they wanna teach living environment, we definitely would entertain the conversation of putting people where their strengths are. If they don't feel like they can. if they don't feel like they can be as effective at the middle level um, with their general certification without having taught those areas for quite some time. Again, it might be a change that they don't want to leave the comfort of their, you know, building, but if it's what's best for kids and it's what's going to make them because we know they're effective at teaching, you know, life science or biology, then that's, that's an option for them too.
I have to agree with what you just said and that's a really good point. Um, it's going to be harder for the teachers to make the shift. I think the component that probably if I were in teaching right now, that would, um, have me most nervous is the engineering component because even though engineering and science go together, they really are very different, a different approach and way to thinking. Um, and you're right, the project, my, my youngest missed out on that. He didn't get it until much later in elementary school. But the students who are starting that, they're already, the students are already training and learning how to solve problems and think that way. So they're probably going to be more prepared for this shift who, that's their only way of approaching science that they know. Um, it's everyone else, if, for the students as well who have not, who are going to have to transition, just like, you know, the kids who were impacted with the changes in the Common Core. Everything was changed midstream and, you know, it was more challenging for them, but the kids have gone all the way through, um, that curriculum. It's a little bit easier for them. So I would absolutely agree with that.
So are we all set? Okay, moving, moving on, um, resolved at the Board of Education, uh, entering the executive session to discuss the employment of a particular individual. Do I have, I have a motion? Matt and Jeff, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed, carried nine zero.